Let me have your attention, everybody. I need to have everybody's attention, please. In the back. Thank you very much. We'll start with the invocation. Councilwoman Ayala.
Thank you, Mayor Miranda. Good night, everyone. As we gather tonight to serve the people of Santa Clarita, let us take a moment to reflect on the responsibility and privilege of public service. Your leadership calls us to look beyond ourselves, beyond our feelings, beyond any personal issues, and focus on what is best for the community we are entrusted to serve. May we remember that unity is not about always agreeing, but about committing to work together with respect and integrity for the greater good. May our decisions tonight and in the future reflect wisdom, fairness, and courage. We ask for the strength to listen with open hearts, the humility to set aside personal interests, and the vision to make choices that will benefit not just today, but the generations to come. Let this chamber always be a place where our shared purpose shines brighter than any division and where service to others remains our highest calling. I want to make an special mention to all the students, teachers, and administrators that they are starting the new school year to be full of learning and positive path for the future. Amen. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Call to order, City Clerk.
Councilwoman McLean.
Here.
Councilmember Gibbs.
Here.
Mayor Miranda.
Here.
Mayor Potem West.
Here.
Councilmember Ayala.
Here.
Councilmember Ayala, would you lead us in the flag salute, please?
Thank you. Can you please rise, place your hand over your heart? Let's start. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Counsel, are there any questions on the agenda?
I'd like to pull item number 11.
Item number 11.
I would concur. Item number 11.
Item number 11 is... Pull twice. Okay. City Clerks, are there any speaker cards on consent?
There is one speaker card for item 8 on consent.
Item 8. Thank you. Let's move on to awards and recognition. Tonight, the city celebrates the Santa Clarita Public Library's 1,000 books before kindergarten, early literacy program, and the outstanding book lovers who have participated. This year, this year-round program is available for our youngest residents to help empower their parents, caregivers, and teachers to foster early literacy, encouraging children from birth to kindergarten to complete 1,000 before starting school. The goal is to give parents the tools and encouragement they need to help children develop strong literacy skills from the very start. Along the way, participants were encouraged to use the early literacy calendar as a guide while exploring five key activities: singing, talking, reading, writing, and playing. I would now like to recognize all participants who completed 1,000 books before kindergarten. Please join us here at the diocese with your parents and receive your certificates.
All right.
All right. Thank you for your patience. Better to let the noise go away and so that we all can be heard clearly for the rest of the meeting. With that, we're going to go to public participation. Thank you. I did want to make the comment that last year we had the 1,000 Books Kids, and it was about half the people that we had today. So obviously, there is a reading explosion going on in Santa Clarita, and I think that's a good thing. Okay. Public comments. First speaker is Keith Lobort, followed by Douglas, followed by Diane Zimmerman. Welcome.
I marked on my card tonight underage gambling. And what I meant is, or what I mean is, we're gambling with our youth's safety. Santa Clarita in particular, maybe this council specifically. Once upon a time, the mayor said, "No e-bike, no motorized vehicles on the Paseo." Since then, he did release a message recently about no e-motocycles, which was, I would call it a start. And city manager, I appreciate his replies. He talked about education, enforcement, and I forget what the other one was, maybe ordinances. So tonight, I'm giving a two-minute crash course on motorized safety up here. I've been talking for 50, almost 58 seconds. Right now, there's a video online that shows you how to modify a Class 1 e-bike to a Class 3 four different ways in 58 seconds. And basically, a Class 1, a Class 2, a Class 3. It's pretty much, maybe just a... Just not a fraud, but it's just a farce. It's a farce because basically, we're saying a Class 1 or Class 2 can go up to 20 miles an hour, one with a throttle, one without. So basically, your kid has a throttle, he's got a motorcycle, or she can go up to 20 miles an hour. You can modify those instantly. Anyway, I had a handout here tonight, and I don't know, do you know that California state law, you can't have a, you can't ride a motorized scooter unless you have a driver's license? That means you've got to be 16 to be on a scooter, and you're not allowed on sidewalks. Now, I know when I posted this up on Facebook this week, the first citizen said, "Yeah, so you have to have a driver's license for a scooter, but you can't..." What about e-bikes? And I go, "I agree. Think about it." So now, law enforcement might say, "You know, I can't really pull a kid over with a scooter. What am I going to say to his parents?" Well, what's that same law enforcement going to say if that kid gets hit or killed? Because right now in Pennsylvania, they're trying to pass a law called Abbey's Law because a 14-year-old got killed on a scooter. But California, we already have that law. You have to be 16. And maybe we should apply that to motors, to e-motocycles, e-bikes, period. And e-motors, more e-bike math, 20 miles an hour, that's 29 feet in one second. That's basically from that wall to Jason's head in one second. And if we're going 28, that's 41 miles an hour. So we have some bike parks coming up. They can go, the kids can go there, but keep them off the streets, 16 and above. And if they're on the Paseos, we'll make a 5 mile, 4 mile an hour speed limit.
Thank you very much. Douglas. All right, Douglas, you have three minutes.
Doug Fraser, county resident. There was a meeting today between Patsy and Ken. Was it positive or negative? If it was positive, then I can just cancel this whole public participation. But if it was negative, I need to go ahead. Can you answer?
All of my meetings with Councilmember Ayala are positive.
Anyway, I've emailed everybody. We had a very bad experience at the Manufactured Home hearing last year. Many unprofessional questionable items, decisions, conduct was made by the consultant. The contract, I'm asking you to cancel it, or either maybe the leadership can say, "Hey, let's put this on the agenda and talk about it." So the first letter is the email asking you to put it on the agenda. The second package, if you'll pay, look to page 2. Item 16B says the city can terminate for convenience with or without cause. Well, that just means that the city staff can just say, "Hey, we terminate this." But with the multiple problems and issues we had last year, it seems reasonable to go ahead and cancel the agreement, terminate it. Frank signed it. I guess Frank is the one that maybe can just say, "Terminate." Why does city staff condones this type of behavior by a contracted consultant? Is not professional. It suppresses the citizens. It causes harm to the citizens of the city. So need to consider either putting this item on the agenda or as leadership, just go ahead and say it's in our prerogative to go ahead and cancel this, terminate this contract agreement. Either way, you don't need to renew it for next year. And on the last page, you can see that there is other companies that have put in an intent to bid, so you can't use excuse of another company not being available. And I also want to reiterate that I'm not appealing the decision. I don't need an answer from staff that says you can't appeal this decision. I'm not appealing the decision.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Doc. Thank you. Diane Zimmerman.
Good evening. Diane Zimmerman, New California State. New California State has been at the state capitol at least four times in the past year long, many more times over the past years since 2018. Each time, we have spoken about child trafficking, overtaxing, public school indoctrination, overregulation, misuse of stifling of our national resources, water, dams, fires. Smart 15-minute cities and the lives and lands so mysteriously lost make way for more of them. I and many others in this valley have been trying to educate the residents as to the dangers posed to them and their families for years, even before joining New California. Death ears. The lithium battery storage situation has become situations out here. So much more. Vaccine and mask mandates ring a bell? New California has answers to all of this. Many things can be changed quickly. Many will have to be over time, but can and will be remedied. Right out of the gate, your taxes will go down 30%. You can look that up, you can check it out. And keep going down. Many regulations will be overturned, so much more. Los Angeles will be broken into many counties, each with its own senator. New California would be taking half of the California debt with it. We want all California to be reorganized and do well. The state is way too populated to be one state, even if the government was not so completely corrupt. Please use great caution when deciding who you are going to support for governor. Remember, the British are not our friends. Anyone still having heavy ties to Britain, no matter how long a resident here, how much he or she may sound off about restoring American values, et cetera, should be suspect. Amazing how all of a sudden the adherence to the Constitution of the United States and the word republic are being brought up in the past couple of months, when New California has been bringing it up since conception in 2018 and before. Our slogan has always been "End democracy. Restore the republic." It's been done 50 times before. On another note, probably musical, have you ever heard the term fart in a windstorm? The source, Free Dictionary by Thiroux. Defined as slang, a trivial act, an action that has little to no importance. Don't worry, your little bunter was just a fart in the windstorm. Everyone has already forgotten it. Why is this press even covering this story? You know these political promises won't amount to anything. They're just a fart in a windstorm. I'm just saying, most of the promises made during an election are just farts in the windstorm, and so many more are waking up in Barbara Segard's lyrics, "Running against the wind." I suspect to escape the stench. At any rate, thank you for hearing me, and I would appreciate anyone that would like to investigate New California State can see me, call me, text me. And thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. City Manager, any comments? You don't want to comment on that list? Let's go with Councilmember comments, and let's start with Marsha.
Thank you very much. The first thing I wanted to mention was something really important that happened on August 8th, where the State Historical Resources Committee recognized La Puerta as a point of historical interest. And for those of you who don't know what La Puerta is, La Puerta, meaning the door, in Spanish, lies nearby to State Highway 14 in the Núñal area between the San Gabriel Mountains to the east and the Santa Susana Mountains to the west. The site is specifically significant for its connection to the Portola Expedition of 1796, the first recorded European exploration of California by land. Passing through La Puerta, the expedition laid eyes on the Santa Clarita Valley for the first time. At the base of the pass, they encountered the Tatavium Village of Tocchacana, Tocchanonanga, sorry, located where Eternal Valley Cemetery extends today. And this is just one more of the really wonderful part of our historical culture dating back many, many, many years. And hopefully, I'm not sure if our schools still do their third grades where they do expeditions to learn about the culture and history. Ingrid is saying yes, as a teacher. That's really great. This is one more thing you can add to that because of its historical significance. And as Chair of the San Fernando Valley COG Transportation Committee, I was pleased to be able to address the Director and several members of Mayor Karen Bass's Office of Transportation Infrastructure regarding the Antelope Valley Line's importance, Metrolink, to not only the North County, but all of the cities served by Metrolink into Los Angeles for the 28 Olympics. I address the need for improvements of the Antelope Valley Line, increased late-night trains, and ways to make every city's residents along the line available to get to the Olympics, should they so desire. And I understand that our city staff is already keeping abreast of the planning process, and I hope to keep advocating for Metrolink's improvements and enhanced schedule. And then, I was very pleased to attend, along with most of my city council members, Bridge to Home's first-year anniversary. We were given a tour of the shelter. And one of the things that I was so proud of with the city's advocacy and dedication and donations, it provides a place for their dignity. It's not just a bunch of cots. It's a beautiful facility where each person who is there is there to maintain their dignity as well as hope for a better future. So I'm just really truly grateful for Bridge to Home and its wonderful facility and all who run it. And then, I wanted to mention Fred Gruccella. He's a friend who passed away recently, who was everywhere that he was needed. He was an advocate for veterans. He was there for so many nonprofit organizations all the time, and he will be greatly missed. And I don't think we're adjourning in his honor tonight, but hopefully, we can do it at our next meeting. And I just wanted to mention, I'm going to get on my soapbox just a little bit. I don't know how many of you have read Ayn Rand's Atlas Shrugged. I read it many years ago, and I thought, "Well, what an interesting concept. Hopefully, we will never come to that type of a thing." However, a few years ago, I read it again, and I was absolutely astonished how real the fiction is today. And it doesn't matter your political beliefs, what party you belong to. I urge you all to read this book, and it should be required reading in our schools, to read this book to see if it is the way we want to live our lives, because it is becoming more real every single day. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gibbs.
Thank you, Mayor. First up tonight, I want to acknowledge and congratulate our new captain, Brandon Barclay, for his position here with the City of Santa Clarita Valley Sheriff's Station. Very well deserved, sir. We're very proud of you. Good luck to your new duties. Thank you, Brandon. Two other things. This past weekend, I had the honor of attending a massive Thanksgiving celebration for a young lady by the name of Belinda Bresnichen, who, through faith and healing, she was able to announce that she had been given a clean bill of health from a long cancer fight that she had had. fight that she had had. And we came from, last year, she served as a keynote speaker for the Circle of Hope Tea Event, and this year, she announced that she was cancer-free. So it was a wonderful event, Secretarius. I want to thank them for hosting and wish her and her family nothing but continued years of happiness. I also wanted to mention, this past weekend, we had the annual Heart of the West Event, one of Carousel Ranch's signature events for equine therapy. It's just a beautiful evening. Definitely cooled down for us all. They raised a lot of money for the organization, and it's always great to see that organization thrive, so I wanted to congratulate them on their event. And Mayor, tonight, I have two adjournments that I'll be doing. First, I'd like to adjourn in memory of a local hero, Detective Joshua Kelly Eklund, who was one of three detectives who tragically lost their lives on July 18th during an explosion at the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department Training Facility. Detective Kelly Eklund was a member of the Elite Arson Explosives Detail. He joined the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department in March 2006 as part of Class 348. Throughout his career, he served with distinction, starting at the Pitches Detention Center North and the North County Correctional Facility. He later transferred to the Lances Sheriff's Station and went on to become a field training officer at the South Los Angeles Station, where he mentored and shaped the careers of many young deputies. He was known for his professionalism and commitment to excellence in law enforcement training. In 2016, he was promoted to the rank of detective and assigned to the L.A. Impact Team, where he worked on high-stakes investigations involving narcotics and violent crime. In 2022, he joined the Arson and Explosives Detail of the Special Enforcement Bureau and earned his bomb technician certifications. Detective Kelly Eklund was not only an accomplished investigator, he was a proud Santa Clarita resident, a husband, and a father. He is survived by his wife Jessica and their seven children. His loss is a devastating reminder of the risks our law enforcement officers take every day to keep our communities safe. On behalf of the City of Santa Clarita, we extend our deepest condolences to the Kelly Eklund family and to his colleagues in the Sheriff's Department. We honor his service, his sacrifice, and his memory. And second, Mayor, this one hit a little home for me. As many people know, I commute a lot for work up to the Central Coast and spent a long time driving the 126 freeway. And this summer, coming home from one of those trips, there was a horrible accident, and we lost a resident here in Santa Clarita, and it was somebody that many of us here know. So tonight, I'd like to adjourn also as well in tonight's meeting in memory of Chad Campbell, a beloved local community leader who was taken from us far too soon. Chad was a gifted designer and photographer whose creative talents reached both national and local stages. He built motion graphics for some of the biggest brands in the country, developed communication strategies for grassroots organizations, and led volunteer teams through challenging election cycles. Here in the valley, Chad was known for his unwavering dedication to service. He was very active in local politics, where he served as the president of the Democratic Alliance for Action of Santa Clarita, and was an active member of the Santa Clarita Valley Democrats, always willing to go above and beyond to support the causes that he cared about. Chad would always give his time and talent freely and never hesitated to lend a hand. His friends remember his booming voice, his big smile, and the way he made everyone feel welcome. He leaves behind his wife Michelle and their daughter Bridget. Many of us had the pleasure of working alongside Michelle when she represented our local Assembly woman, and our thoughts and prayers are with both of them during this difficult time. Chad's loss will be deeply felt for years to come, but his spirit, his kindness, and his commitment to making a difference will live on in all the hearts of all those who knew and loved him. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem West.
Thank you, Mayor. It's certainly been a long summer. Good to be back with everybody. We had this summer a wonderful opportunity. The city's community preservation team partnered with Castake Animal Care Center to bring Pet Adoption Day to Bridge Pork Park, and it was just a beautiful event. Alongside the adoptable dogs, the event showcased the city's new library express, and they featured the youth sports pop-up and play activities on the field. The day was a success, with five dogs finding new homes forever. And later that weekend, the care center hosted its own event and saw an additional 21 pets adopted, highlighting the strong impact and the importance of pet adoption in Santa Clarita. If you're interested in adopting, please visit Castake Animal Care Center at 31044 Choy Canyon Road, or just browse online at animalcare.lacounty.gov. Wanted to say that I work with the Animal Care Foundation, which we raise money throughout Los Angeles, and the Animal Care Foundation is going to fund a new training area and exercise area for the Castake Animal Shelter, which will cost over $30,000, so that will be a wonderful amenity for the animals. And they are also funding $8,000 for emergency evacuation for equines, for horses, during fires and disasters. So I think those are going to be valued assets. I just want to look at these dogs. The adjournment I have sadly, as for someone that's been in this community a very long time, and we will adjourn in memory of Hank Arclan, a former California State Assemblyman. He was a longtime business owner here and a valued member of our community. Over the course of Hank's long and remarkable life, he made an impact in both public service and in the business world. He served in the California State Assembly, where he was proudly advocated for the needs of his district. And in addition to his political career, Hank was a longtime owner of the iconic Saugus Cafe, a true Santa Clarita landmark and the oldest continuing operating restaurant in Los Angeles County, serving our community since 1887. Remarkable. Under his ownership, the Saugus Cafe built its tradition as a gathering place for friends, family, travelers, and history lovers alike. It has been visited by celebrities, dignitaries, and generations of Santa Clarita residents, all drawn to its welcoming atmosphere and rich in local history. Hank was also the founder of the North Valley Construction Company, which he led for more than 65 years, providing jobs and contributing to the growth and development of our community. His contributions exceed far beyond his business. He was a dedicated supporter of the local institutions, such as including Henry Mayo Nuhua Hospital, and gave generously to many, many charitable causes throughout his life. Hank's legacy is one of service, generosity, and enduring love for his community. We are deeply saddened by Hank's passing, and our hearts are truly with his wife of 55 years, Louise, his family, his friends, and all the people that had the privilege to know him. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ayala.
Thank you, Mayor Miranda. I want to thank the residents, especially in Canyon Country, that they have bring into their attention their concerns for the lithium facility that is in Canyon Country and advocating for you, listening to your concerns. We have been working, and we had in the Canyon Country Community Center, the Energy Storage Facility Community Meeting, and the company was there, the fire department, the sheriff's department, and all the residents that attended had the opportunity to have direct conversation and questions answered by those three parties. Also, I want to announce that I am a new graduate from the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, the Academy for City Council Members, the Contract Cities Association, they do this sheriff academy for all the city council members in the cities that they are serving, and we were around 10 graduates. I was the only one from Santa Clarita, but the important thing here is that I learned so much about operations and tactical and security and the equipment that they need, also about contracts. But all of this is in the benefit of our city. I think I am better informed. I admire so much the work for the sheriff's department, and now I have a deeper and greater appreciation for our sheriff's department. And so that is a class from 2025, from cities from Pamdell, Lakewood, La Mirada, and other cities from LA County. Also, in the summer, we were in hieters, but that was only for city council. I was happy to work and participate in many summer activities in the city of Santa Clarita, like census concerts in the park, in the libraries, the aquatic center, and the celebrate in the Canyon Country Community Center. It's amazing to see the families enjoying these opportunities that the city is bringing to the residents, but it's also, for me, an opportunity to listen to you and see what is important for you and your families, and it was very nice to share that with families in Santa Clarita. Also, because legislation is important for us, what is happening in Sacramento, I have the opportunity to go to the grand opening of the office of Senator Valadarez for her new senate office here, and also to some of the nonprofits that were having functions I was happy to support during the summer, like Caruso Ranch, Bridge to Home, the Women's Council of Reactors, and the Chamber of Commerce, and other nonprofits here in Santa Clarita. That's all I have for the moment. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm going to start with William S. Hart Park. I think we have a slide presentation for that. This summer, the City of Santa Clarita welcomed its 40th park, William S. Hart Park. The park has now officially transitioned from Los Angeles County to city ownership. It offers visitors the chance to explore the beloved barnyard, home to the alpacas, horses, donkeys, and more, and tour the historic ranch house, which highlights the legacy of silent film star William S. Hart. Open daily from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., William S. Hart Park preserves a piece of Santa Clarita's past while providing new opportunities for the community to connect with nature, animals, and local heritage in one unique destination. To learn more about ours or recreational and venue opportunities at the park, please visit santaclarita.gov/hartpark. I'm very excited about that. I think a lot of people have worked very hard to make that happen, and I'm just pleased. I got a sneak peek at it, and what I saw was very impressive, so thank you. I also want to talk a little bit, very quickly, about the Triumph Foundation Gala that was held at the Petersen Museum in LA. Triumph Foundation is a local foundation, actually, but it includes most of Southern It's for paraplegics and the support of paraplegics to help paraplegics get through life, paraplegics and their families. Andrew Skinner and Kirsten Skinner founded that foundation. The gala had hundreds of people, many, many, many of them paraplegics, in attendance, and it's absolutely amazing what they can do with just a little bit of help, just a little bit of help. And so they have more events up here that will be up here in Santa Clarita, and I suggest that you look up triumphfoundation.com and keep abreast of what they're doing. They're just a very good nonprofit organization here in Santa Clarita. Bridge to Home, terrific event, first-year anniversary, a lot of people were there. Homelessness is still a very big problem. We're trying to, you know, it's something that's never going to be completely solved 100%, but it would be nice to solve it like 90%. That would be, you know, an ambitious goal, but a very good goal. And here in Santa Clarita, we've actually reached that goal, okay, here in Santa Clarita. But homelessness throughout the county is not very good at this time. And so they had their first-year anniversary, and I reminded everybody that the land of the Bridge to Home Shelter was donated by the City of Santa Clarita, and the City of Santa Clarita also donated funds to build a structure and also donated funds to keep it running. The County of LA, through Supervisor Barker, has been very supportive and has helped us as much as it can, as long as she can. I have issues with the rest of the supervisors and the county in general in terms of measure rates, which was supposed to be a quarter percent of the sales tax to stop homelessness in all of LA County, and I'm not quite sure if that's worked out that way. So, but that's my, that's my thing, and I apologize for bringing it up here, but I just want to let you know that I'm not happy with that. Also, I want to talk just very quickly about a special needs group that works with adults, and that's a small nonprofit that I hope gets big called Agapi Village. They're currently located in the mall by nearby Salita's Restaurant. They do a wonderful job, and these are special needs adults that would like to have jobs, would like to have relatively normal lives if possible, and they produce coffee over there. They literally have a coffee factory and a coffee brand that they sell, and they also do, what do you call it, when you do the shirts and you put the logos and designs on that? There's a name for that. Anyway, they do that. So if you, if anybody has t-shirts or polo shirts or hats that they want their logo or anything written on it, Agapi Village has the machines to do it right there at the mall, and they're relatively inexpensive, and it's for a very, very good cause. Sheriff Captain Brian Barclay, you still here? There you go. Congratulations. It was an honor to be part of that. And what I will add to what Jason said, the competition was tough, okay? You weren't a slam dunk. The competition was very, very tough. We got some really top-of-the-line potential sheriff's captains out there, and I wish them all well. I just think we got the best one. So congratulations. The last thing, this past Saturday at the mall, we had a wonderful nonprofit event, Salsa Festival, with a lot of salsa dancing. Dozens and dozens of people attended. It was a very, very good event, and it raised funds for the Olive Terrace Theater, okay? For all the people who don't know, there's a theater in the mall right by Salita's. It's a wonderful theater. You probably get 100, 130 people in there, and you can have all kinds of performances. So if you're interested in either performing or having a performance or going to see a performance, check it out, okay? The last thing I have is I have an adjournment for Dr. John MacArthur. Tonight, we adjourn our meeting in memory of a prominent and deeply influential figure in Santa Clarita's faith and academic communities, Pastor John MacArthur. Pastor MacArthur passed away last month at the age of 86 after more than 40 years of dedicated service as a president and later chancellor of the Masters University in Santa Clarita. He began his leadership at what was then Los Angeles Baptist College in 1985, helping to transform it into the Masters University, a nationally-recognized Christian institution. In 1986, he founded the Masters Seminary, training generations of men for ministry around the world. His vision, theological leadership, and unwavering commitment to scripture have left a lasting mark on thousands of students, faculty, and families. Beyond the university, Pastor MacArthur was longtime leader of Grace Community Church in Sun Valley and the president and voice behind Grace2U, an international ministry that extended his reach far beyond Santa Clarita, sharing sermons, teachings, and radio broadcasts across the globe. Pastor MacArthur also wrote nearly 400 books, which have been translated into two dozen line- languages. He was married to his wife Patricia for more than 61 years and was a devoted father to four children, Matt, Marcy, Mark, and Melinda, 15 grandchildren, and nine great-grandchildren. We extend our condolences to the MacArthur family, the Masters University, Grace Community Church, and all who were impacted by his life and ministry. We adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Pastor John MacArthur. I just want to add that I had the good fortune of knowing him personally, and he signed a bunch of books for me and actually gave them to me to read, and I actually read them. And there's, there's so much stuff going on in the world today. A lot are very unpleasant, and I said this many times from this, from this chair, I really wish that a lot of the vitriol would go away and that we would treat each other, if not with agreement, with respect, and honor one another for who we are, and let us be different if we want to be different, and let us disagree if we want to be disagree, if we want to disagree. But it's not okay to be disagreeable. All right? If we want to disagree, that's okay. Disagreeable, not so much, so. Adjourning in the name of Dr. John MacArthur just reminded me that to do, to do a little bit of my own sermon myself, so thank you. Okay. With that, we're going to agenda item number one.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, before we begin consideration of item number one tonight, I need to disclose that I received campaign contributions in excess of $500 from both Carl Goldman and Jerry Sorati Goldman, who I understand are property owners of a portion of the site, which is now proposed to be included as part of this development since it was last considered by this council. So as a result, I will be recusing myself from participating in this item due to the provisions of the Levine Act.
May I ask, when did these notices were made?
I believe it was July, July 11th or 12th, right around that timeframe.
Sure, it was after our last meeting?
Yes, sir. It was before the item, their property was part of the development that's being proposed.
I'm not trying to be difficult, but you're two experienced politicians who allow something like that to happen when you, when you knew we would be having this meeting.
So I knew we would be having a meeting by the time that I was aware that their project was now officially becoming part of the presentation coming to us. The 30-day window had passed under the new Levine Act that passed in 2023, which disallowed me the ability to return the contribution and be able to participate in the item. So because of that legislation, I have no choice but to recuse tonight.
I have no choice to accept it. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
I will continue to recuse on this issue. I haven't voted on this issue at all, so I will just.
I understand.
Thank you.
The hearing is officially open. We will receive comments, questions, and any oral protest from any interested person. When all comments have been received, the public comment portion of the hearing will be closed. City Clerk.
All notices required by law have been provided.
Thank you. City staff will now make a presentation, followed by presentations from the applicant, after which the public will have an opportunity to comment. With that, I would like to turn the time over to Erica Iverson, Senior Planner. Hi, Erica. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Miranda. Good evening, council members. I'm Erica Iverson, Senior Planner in the City's Planning Division, presenting Master Case 25089, a request to modify the Hartwell mixed-use project at the corners of Main Street, Market Street, and Railroad Avenue in Old Town New Hall. We'll begin with a quick look back at the original approval for the Hartwell project. This was approved by the city council in May of this year. The project site is located in the Arts and Entertainment Zone within the Old Town New Hall specific plan at the corners of Main Street, Market Street, and Railroad Avenue and is across Railroad Avenue from the Janhite MetroLink Station. The approved project consisted of the redevelopment of the Max Pool Supply Horseshoe on Main, the Masonic Lodge and Courthouse Building to allow for the construction of a new five-story mixed-use building at 52 feet in height. It included 78 apartment units, about 5,200 square feet of commercial floor area, and 122 parking spaces within a ground floor and subterranean level of parking. The project required a city council decision due to the proposed demolition of the historic Masonic Lodge Courthouse Building. And since the council approval in May, the applicant has begun the project implementation. They've submitted demo permit applications for the three buildings. They've begun working with rafters to remove some of the interior millwork, and the demo permits are expected to be issued this week. Turning now to the modification request that is before the council this evening. The modification would expand the project site, adding the adjacent KHTS radio station property that is shown in yellow on the slide. It would increase the number of apartments to 98. It would increase the commercial floor area to approximately 6,300 square feet and increase the parking to 158 spaces on-site. This modification to the original project is an expansion of about 25%, and a minor use permit is required to expand a project that has a conditional use permit approval when that modification is an expansion between 10 and 50%. Because the original project went before the city council for a decision, this change or this minor use permit is before the council for a decision this evening. The building architectural style and height remains the same as the original project. It's at five stories, 52 feet in height, with one subterranean level of parking. The building would expand to the north. You'll notice some changes to the commercial storefronts on Main Street. In particular, the awnings have been updated based on council comments from the original project hearings. You'll recall the due to Assembly Bill or AB 2097, the city can't impose parking minimums on projects within half a mile of a major transit stop like the Janhite MetroLink Station. With the proposed modification, the applicant provided a revised parking demand study, and the revised study accounts for the additional units. It also expands the study area of on-street parking spaces that was expanded to reflect the project expansion. New parking counts were taken on a weekend at a peak hour when there was an event at the Canyon Guild Theater in order to capture, capture the highest peak demand conditions for parking. The analysis indicates there's available parking on-street during peak parking demand with the study area to accommodate the modified project. You can see the table summarizes the changes to the parking with the proposed modification. In terms of parking for the residential units, the modification would add 36 on-site parking spaces, which would bring the per-unit parking ratio slightly up from the original approval to a ratio of 1.6 parking space per unit. Overall, 158 parking spaces would be provided on-site for the residential use. Guest parking demand increases to 25 spaces that would continue to be accommodated by available on-street parking. And lastly, commercial parking requirements would be met through participation in the Old Town New Hall specific plan parking and LOOFI program. This would, the modification would add INLOFI payment for three more commercial parking This is a housing project under the state housing law and has been reviewed for conformance with the city's objective development standards. Under state housing law, a housing project that meets the city's objective design standards or design criteria must be approved. All public noticing required by law was completed. The project was contemplated under the Old Town New Hall specific plan EIR and will comply with the required mitigation measures. No further action under, or no further action under SEQA is required. Staff recommends the city council adopt a resolution to approve Master Case 25089 for the modification of the Hartwell project. That concludes my comments. I am available for questions, and the applicant is over here.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The applicant now has up to 15 minutes to address the city council. I will now turn the time over to Jonathan Tolleson. Jason, I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. Okay. Good evening, Mayor. Council members and staff, my name is Jason Tolleson, and I'm here tonight representing the applicant for the Hartwell in Old Town New Hall. Pleased to be here tonight to answer any questions about the proposed project and to provide some updates on our recent progress. I won't get into the technical changes. I think those were covered thoroughly by staff. I just want to give you some updates from our last meeting on May 13th related to KHTS and their relocation efforts, as well as rafters and the historical preservation that's gone into the Masonic Lodge Building, and some updates on our next steps for the project. You may recall that on the May 13th city council hearing, we informed council that we had addressed concerns about sound mitigation for KHTS. One of those mitigation measures was to purchase KHTS so they could relocate to a more appropriate location for their use. In that May 13th meeting, we requested a reduction in a discretionary impact fee to fund mitigation for this building. Subsequently, we consummated an agreement with KHTS that purchased the building and relocated KHTS away from construction and agreed that was the best solution. KHTS is currently in negotiations on a space to relocate its operations. Carl is here to talk about that in some more detail. And the inclusion of this site in the project results in the additional 20 new apartment units parked at the same ratio as the previously approved project and another 1,000 square feet of retail, and we felt that, all things considered, that was the best solution in this situation. Next slide. In addition, we're pleased to report that Rafters has moved to their new location and remains in Old Town New Hall. They have removed most of the wood paneling from their, from their clubroom up in the upstairs of the Masonic Lodge Building, and as soon as the demolition is permitted, is pulled, we will be removing the historic trusses that we agreed to, to remove. We have helped Rafters finance their relocation and gave them substantial financial support in that effort. Next slide. All requested mitigation efforts for the Masonic Lodge have been completed or are underway. City staff and library services inspected the building for potential historical significance. The building official utilized a pinhole camera to view inside of multiple walls. It was determined that one wall holds a small section of bars that the city will remove and keep for historical preservation. So you can see the photo to the right. I believe this was the extent of anything determined to be historic in the building. And a historic American building survey was submitted to the city and approved on July 21st, 2025, which effectively documents the historic components of the building. Finally, I'm pleased to report that we have closed escrow on all sites except for the KHTS building. We are very close to pulling a demolition permit and are in the process of preparing construction drawings for plant check, and we are on track to begin demolition in the early part of September, and we expect to have a building permit sometime in May of next year. And with that, I will conclude my presentation. I am available for any questions that you may have on the project.
Are there any questions?
Yes, thank you. Since, thank you for bringing the update of the proposal of the project. Is there any graphic or picture with the city or with you that we can see where are the guests' parking lot now that are going to be more? Are they only outside, or you mean inside and outside for guests to the residence?
Correct. My understa, there's a, there's a parking study in the staff report. If I could summarize that to try to answer that question, please correct me if I mistake this. The parking study determines that the demand for the residents is met on-site and that the commercial parking is met through an INLOFI and public infrastructure. So really, it's being studied as the impact of the guest parking. And as we mentioned in the staff report, it was at peak demand, it was determined that there was sufficient parking in the immediate vicinity of the project to capture the expected demands from guest parking. I'll also add that the empirical data from New Hall Crossing, it's just two blocks to the north, has a parking demand of 1.27 stalls per unit, and we're providing parking in excess of that for the on-site residents. So I believe there's also sufficient capacity on-site for, from unused parking stalls by the residents, but we're not relying on that in the study.
I have to apologize. I went a little out of order. So I apologize. Time for council questioning will come. Do we have any public speakers? Frank Maga, followed by Carl Goldman, followed by Glenda.
Mayor, councilpeople, I appreciate your ability to let me address you tonight. I'm Frank Maga, 24258 Main Street and 22500 on Market Street. I'm here to express serious concerns about the Hartwell development. Despite State AB 0097, which eliminates parking requirements for the city, Santa Clarita still has a legal duty under government code 65300 and 65850 in FICA to protect public health, safety, welfare. Courts have consistently held that cities cannot ignore or shift foreseeable impacts to the community. Foreseeable impacts consist of, during construction, harm to nearby restaurants and public health from dust and air quality, excessive noise drives away businesses and customers, congestion and hazards from oncoming vehicles, construction vehicles, retail parking spaces is lost to workers and equipment after construction. The size of the project will massively increase vehicle traffic, resulting in significant congestion. Developers' parking shortage will push residents to park in streets, occupy public private lots, and displace business patrons. We all know that there's going to be a huge shortage. Required city actions, enforce conjunction, enforce mitigation, ban overnight parking on Main Street, provide daytime parking limits to protect businesses' turnover, fund, city-funded reinforced public lots because of their overflow. The project has, has proposed shifts in physical, social, and financial burdens to downtown business residents. Contrary to the law and public policy, I urge the council to either reject the project or impose binding enforcement conditions that address these impacts. My recording, my recording of these objections to the city is on notice, and foreseeable harms occur without mitigation, and it may expose the city to legal liability. Finally, let me, let me be clear. Nothing I say tonight waves my rights. If the city approves the project without fully analyzing and mitigating the impacts, I reserve the right to pursue all legal remedies. I am, I have provided the city with a detailed report of my work, and it, it has significant references to legal things which the, which the city should review prior to making their decision.
Thank you. Carl Goldman.
We've been navigating challenges with this development for up to 15 months. We came to an agreement with the sorority group in May. Jerry, my wife, has spent months looking for office space, distracting her from her focus on our business, and because the radio station's space requirements are very challenging. She finally found a new office space, but we will lose that if the delays continue. As you know, Jerry and I are the owners and operators of our, of our alley's only radio station. We're a small business who have constantly given back. We're a small business who have constantly given back to Santa Clarita for over 35 years. We're requesting the council right now, today, to approve the project tonight so we can focus on running our business. Thank you.
Glenda. Okay. Gene Cox, followed by Gerald Charbonneau, followed by Tim Ben Boyston.
City council members and city staff, I remain in my support of the Hartwell project in its current forms. And I believe that it is ultimately the best for what we've got going on in downtown New Hall. We've discussed this several times. And you know, the thing that I've been in touch with Tom Cole's office at the city of Santa Clarita, and they have informed me that they have put out a request proposal for the new parking garage that is coming on south of Main Street. So I know you can't necessarily connect these two projects, but the city is making a significant effort and additional investment in trying to solve and mitigate any of the parking problems that may come to this project. So like I said, I know you can't necessarily connect the two projects, but those things are going on as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sure.
This is from Tony Maldonado. He says, "This project should have been straightforward, but it has been clouded by conflicts of interest, manipulation, and..." It begins with Councilman Jason Gibbs, which I agree, who should recuse himself, which I'm glad we did. "The Goldman family, whose property Serrano is now buying, contributed to his congressional campaign," which we know. Then it goes on to say, "Second chapter in the story is a development impact fee. Started $750,000 meant for historical preservation, investment in our community future. But after pressure from the Goldmans and false rumors spread by Ms. Light, that fee was shifted to parking instead. This change came only after Gibbs intervened following the agreement between the Goldmans as a developer." This leaves a question the public has never been given an answer to. Why was the $0.5 million in community benefits erased? And did the developer raise Goldman's property purchase price by roughly that same amount? If so, then this wasn't about helping Santa Clarita. It was about maximizing the Goldman's payout. And while all this was happening, a planning commissioner, now removed for performance, has been stirring up residents with misinformation, turning council meetings into political theaters. That brings us to tonight. A Serrano purchase of the Goldman property should have been part of the original plan. It wasn't because of the Goldman's self-serving maneuvers, the lack of transparency, delayed project, and rooted in public trust. Santa Clarita deserves a clear, honest process, not conflicts of interest, not side deals, and not community benefits turned into private property. Really quickly, since I missed public participation last meeting, there was-- it was just-- should not have happened. But I'm very upset at the fact that Ms. Light has been going on talking poorly about Ms. Ayala and Mr. Miranda. And that's wrong, okay? She has a lot of people out here that were all complaining and booing because she lost. There was a gentleman who was, God knows, someone bigger than me, yelling at me, and this is part of her group. We have a problem with that. And we have a problem with the fact that she's continuously, continuously going after you, but more, Mrs. Ayala. And this all has to do because of this one project. Because if you guys go back and look at the March 18th meeting, you'll see that everything was done correctly and that, yes, he offered money to purchase the house, property from the Goldmans, and that she just took everything out of context and is unhappy because she did not get what she wanted to get. At this point, I think that that should be what's going on with you. It's actually racist, the way I look at it. And that's the way her people look at it, that I'm calling it racist. But now I'm calling it because now I believe it. Thank you.
Thank you. Gerald, followed by Tim Ben, followed by Barry Egan.
Good evening, everybody. Mayor and council members and staff of the city. I'm here tonight on a couple of things. First of all, I support the proposal. I want you to know that. It's an amazing area I love to go to every Friday night and hang out. But as I was reading the details about it, I realized that there is not any mention of affordable housing. And I'm wondering if that was considered or if it was not considered. Maybe the applicant can respond to that. But I was disappointed in that it was not mentioned. And I would basically, you know, would like to see that all the residents of the city could have the opportunity, the opportunity for everybody to be in that wonderful area. And so I'm wondering why, and I'm glad the applicant here. So maybe he can respond. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Tim Ben Boyston.
Good evening, Mayor Miranda, members of the city council, and city manager Ken Striplin. My name is Tim Ben Boyston. I'm speaking here on behalf of the nonprofit Canyon Theater Guild as executive director. Thank you for your pilot weekend shuttle program. We're looking forward to the results. And thank you for acknowledging that there is a parking problem in our wonderful Old Town New Hall. The enlarged Hartwell project will make the parking problem much worse. Santa Clarita's code calls for 260 spaces to be built to take care of the building and its guests. The developer is proposing to build only 158 spaces, which cannot be used by the public. That means that the other 102 vehicles will be parking on the streets and the parking lots surrounding the project. The developer claims that the tenants will not need two spaces per apartment and that they will only need half of the guest spaces required. This is ridiculous, and anyone who lives in an apartment or condo in Santa Clarita knows it. The parking study by LLG is flawed. You and your staff were given documentation that showed 15 spaces that do not exist. Please ask the authors of the study why these corrections were not made in their current study and how they define the size of a parking space. To demonstrate when the peak demand would be, the study used July 19th, 2025, because the CTG was doing a show that night. However, that show was a teen workshop show and only drew 175 people, as opposed to the April 27th, 2024 main stage show, Xanadu, used in the last study, which had 264 seats occupied. At an average of two people per car, that's a 44-car difference. Even using the current study, it would show a 24-space deficit. In addition, the study does not address whether the Hart and Main Event Center had an event or how many people were there. They have the capacity of 200, according to their website. This could be an additional 100 cars that were not counted. Also, we do not know how many people were at the Main Theater, which has a capacity of 82 seats and a possibility of another 40 cars. That's a lot of cars that are not accounted because they didn't want to do a study that was actual and real. They wanted to do something that would support the project. It's not correct. AB 297 states that the-- 2097 states that the city can object to a project if a negative impact is shown within 30 days of the project plans being accepted. We are in that period and asking the council to address the shortcomings of this study, take one of two actions. Number one, declare there's a parking deficit and send the project back to the planning commission to address that negative impact. Or number two, as is your right under AB 2097, instruct the developer to remove the gated private spaces and allow the public to use them. If there are no problems with parking here in New Hall, the developer should have no problem doing that and sharing with everyone. Thank you for your time, and may God bless the city of Santa Clarita.
Barry Egan.
Listen up, Egan.
Egan.
Good evening, Mayor Miranda, members of the city council. My name is Barry Egan. I've been a volunteer at the Canyon Theater Guild for over 20 years. I'd like to begin by thanking you for the pilot program to help with the shuttle weekend parking problems downtown. The Hartwell project will make the parking much worse. According to your planning department, the parking study by the LLG company, which the developer paid for, was used as, quote, "the evidence of which we are looking at and verify the methodology to determine the parking demand for their project," end quote. However, the original parking study was highly flawed. The amended parking study being used for the expanded project is still using the same flawed data. The original looked at only one weekend date and concluded that the peak time, there was a surplus of four spaces out of the existing on-street parking of 132 spaces. The fatal flaw in the analysis is that there were not 132 legal spaces on the streets surrounding the project. The study counted spaces that are in yellow loading zones in front of driveways and within fire hydrant zones. Zone 1A has shown to have nine spaces, according to the LLG study. However, there are two large driveways with a 30-foot curb in between, which yields only one legal 20-foot space. Zone 8, according to LLG, has nine spaces. However, due to a fire hydrant zone and driveways, there are only six legal spaces. Zone 9A, which LLG says has four spaces, actually has zero spaces due to the entire curb being a commercial loading zone and red curb. The LLG studied that the total number of spaces in the supply before was 132 spaces. However, with curb measurements using 20-foot legal spaces, there are actually only 117 spaces. That is a deficit of 15 legal spaces. Using the LLG study data in the studied area, there was no surplus of spaces, but actually there was a deficit of legal spaces. The city council needs to reject this project because the project relies upon a study that is flawed. Although the area of street parking has been enlarged, the original flawed data is still being used in the current study for most streets. I also like to say in conclusion that our city has a wonderful community of senior citizens. And those senior citizens make up a great deal of the patrons of Main Street, the theaters and restaurants. And much as I hate to admit it, for us old folks, the challenge of finding new parking spaces and walking great distances is a real challenge. And I think it's incumbent upon the city to do everything they can to encourage senior citizens to go out and participate in the community, not discourage them by putting obstacles in their way like lack of parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Eduardo Alciera, and followed by Felicia Grady.
Thank you, Mayor Miranda, Santa Clarita council members and staff. My name is Eduardo Artiaga. I was a board member of the Canyon Theater Guild for six years, board president of three of those years. And now I'm a volunteer director and community member concerned about the changes to the Hartwell project. First and foremost, I would like to thank the city for the pilot weekend shuttle program. As the director of our current production of Roger's and Hammerstein Cinderella, I know our patrons who are attending our shows are grateful. Furthermore, our show runs one more weekend at the Canyon Theater Guild. So I would like to take this opportunity to invite everyone to come join us and enjoy a show that's fun for the whole family. Now with the issue at hand, I understand that the project is moving forward, but I would like to express my concerns with the changes to the Hartwell project, expanding the size of the project with a higher amount of apartments. Mayor Miranda expressed at an earlier meeting that we have a parking issue well before the mention of the Hartwell project, which is true. Parking has always been an issue, but that doesn't mean that this project doesn't have a negative impact on our organization and all of the small businesses and residents of the area. The proposed expansion of this project will further negatively impact everyone in the Arts District and downtown New Hall. Using our current show as an example, Cinderella has had over 3,000 people come and enjoy our production so far, with four more shows coming this weekend. On any given weekend, the Guild has shows. The Main has performances with different artists every weekend. The event venue Hart and Main has events on the weekends as well. On any given weekend, our business is seafood trike of anywhere between 200 to 300 patrons, between the Main and the Guild, plus guests at the event venue, plus other community members enjoying all that our great city has to offer in downtown New Hall. Construction of this project negatively impacts us in the short term. But this project as a whole will continue to negatively impact every business on Main Street. And to consider an expansion of this project with more apartments will make an already bad problem much, much worse. While I know this project will possibly move forward, I sincerely hope you will consider the negative effects of a larger project will cause on every business in our ever-growing community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Felicia Grady.
Good evening, Mayor Miranda, members of the city council, and city manager, Mr. Striplin. My name is Felicia Grady. I'm a board member and volunteer of Canyon Theater Guild. First of all, I want to thank you so much for the Old Town New Hall Shuttle Pilot Program during its short existence, which ends this weekend. I personally used it four times to go to Old Town Junction, the Main, and twice to Canyon Theater with family and friends. One of my friends who has trouble walking, she kept thanking me for suggesting the shuttle because it was such a great experience for her. Make it easier. I love being able to find a space easily in the parking structure over there by the Lemley and ride the air-conditioned shuttle. And I like walking. But when I broke my foot last year and I was wearing a medical boot, I did not like walking. And it was that night I took my mom to the theater, my 91-year-old mom. We had to park at the train station. I did not like seeing her stress out because she couldn't cross that busy railroad avenue just, you know, with all the traffic and so on to be safe. And I don't like that when I was talking with a friend last week and I invited her to meet me in Old Town New Hall that weekend. She said, "No way. The parking in that area is terrible. She doesn't go there." So that's when I told her about the shuttle. And she said, "Oh, okay. We'll do that, but that's not lasting." I don't like that the shuttle was not well promoted to the public. It started immediately without being able to really tell people about it and that it's gone too soon. I didn't like that the starting time was 2:00, which was not helpful to people who wanted to attend the 2:00 matinee either at the Main or at Canyon Theater. It almost seemed like the pilot program was designed to fail, but I don't want to think you'd actually do that, right? So now we're back to the current struggle of finding weekend parking, which we've already had that problem. And we already don't have enough parking. It'll be worse, of course, with the expansion of the Hartwell project. And if you're not going to add public parking spaces to that project and until we have a multi-level parking structure at the far end of Main Street, restore the shuttle, promote it to the public, have the starting time at 1:00, not 2:00, this will help the people who want to support our restaurants and our theaters in Old Town New Hall. Thank you.
We have one written comment card that is opposed to the staff recommendation. Joe Morelli. The applicant now has five minutes to rebut any public comments.
I don't have time to add to my original presentation except to say that we are too very pleased to see the RFP that was recently issued for the city lot in the street that's going to add public parking to the former stalls. It's the solution to all of the problems that are being discussed tonight. And we're going to be one of the participants in that project. We would love to see more public parking available in the district. Those are fair comments. This project, however, I think has been shown to not exacerbate that problem in a meaningful way and ask you to consider that in your deliberations tonight.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are there any staff or council member comments? Questions?
Is there anything specifically that the council would like us to address? I'm not sure there are any new issues that arose since the last hearing, but we're certainly welcome. Happy to answer any questions you want us to address.
Marcia.
I heard something interesting about the 30-day--
I heard something interesting about the 30-day period where you can change a project. Since this project has come back and is revised, does that 30 days start over?
So I don't know what you mean by change a project. You have 30 days to identify if there is, based on substantial evidence in the record, an impact on parking that needs to be addressed and justify a requirement.
Okay. Thank you. That. Does that 30-day period where we can have parking addressed start over? Are we within that window?
We are within that window.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. And since there are so many comments questioning the parking study, I'm wondering if we can't take a look at that again. It makes no sense to think that a project of this size is not going to affect on-street parking. The developer may have added a few spots for residences, but the on-street parking is a problem and the impact to other businesses. So I'm wondering if we can't take a look at that again. The other question I had was on in-lu fees. How much are the total in-lu fees in dollars for this project regarding parking?
Thank you, Councilmember McLean. With the modification, in total, the fees are just shy of $88,000.
And does that all go towards the parking structure?
It goes into a fund that would, that the city would use at some time in the future toward parking.
Okay. The other question I had was, is Mr. Maga gave us a list of problems that he feels is going to be negatively impacting current businesses during construction, and he lists some California government codes. And I know we don't have a written health and safety, but does it have to be written in order to show an impact to the health and safety and mentioned in Mr. Maga's letter?
Yes. So I think there's a couple of things. First, I want to clarify the answer I gave you on the 30 days. We are within that period. When you say, "Take another look at that," we have to make the determination within 30 days. So I'm not sure when that 30-day period ends, but if you're saying, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but if you're saying, "Questions have been raised about the parking study, so we should take another look at that," and if you're implying, "Come back and talk about it further," that would all have to happen within that 30-day period. You have to make the determination that there is a significant impact based on substantial evidence in the record, that there will be a significant impact in parking, and that would justify requiring additional parking. So it's not just you have questions about the study. You have to make the determination about whether or not the evidence in the record establishes there will be a significant impact on parking within a half mile of the project.
Well, in my mind, we made that decision when this project first came to us. It was obvious. However, we weren't within that 30-day period.
Okay.
Now, it seems to me to be just as obvious, if not more so, with the expansion of this project, that the evidence is there, that there is not sufficient parking.
Okay. The second thing that I wanted to address was Mr. Maga's letter. Those different statutes that he is citing are just the general statutes about a city's zoning power. They are not specific to the Housing Accountability Act and the requirements of that. Under the Housing Accountability Act, if you're going to deny a project for not meeting all of your objective standards, then you can only do that if you can establish there is a, either that they don't meet the objective standard, or if they do, that there's still a significant health and safety issue based upon they're not meeting a health and safety standard that exists in writing in your code already, and there's no way to mitigate it. So staff is not aware of any such standard that has not been met and can't be mitigated if it was, and I have not heard of any such standard that has not been met that couldn't be mitigated on that health and safety side.
Well, I think I mentioned before that we need to get something in writing to help us with future projects. Is that in the works at all?
Well, I think that with regard to the AB 2097 analysis, staff is undertaking AB 2097 parking analysis and studies with regard to all of the areas in the city that would be potentially subject to AB 2097. So that's underway. With regard to developing health and safety standards that we could put in the code that we would be concerned about a project violating and not being able to mitigate so that we could deny a project, I'm not sure how to develop those standards.
Okay. You know, I've been around a really long time, and we are a very unique city, and we have dealt with developers and projects in the past. And we have been able to build, and we have been able to have quality projects without being threatened. You know, a good project that benefits the community as well as the developer does not need to impose Sacramento's overbearing rules and threaten us unless we vote yes, regardless of whether there is adequate infrastructure and/or parking. This just goes against my grain. I mentioned several concerns that I had the last time around, and I was able to abstain. But now there's three of us, and I'm told that I have to vote yes, even though I still have these concerns. That is not okay with me. So I don't know, do we worry about Mr. Maga suing us, or do we worry about this H D F? It's the California Housing Defense Fund, who, by the way, I checked the board of directors, they're all from San Francisco. They're not from here. And that reminds me very much of how we were forced into going to districts, which I can guarantee you, 90% of our residents didn't know what's happening, and now that they know what's happening, are absolutely opposed to that. So this reminds me of something like that. And it just reminds me of, and I'm not being recorded on this, it just reminds me that, you know, we continue to lose any voice. I don't like to go on social media too much because there's a lot of negativity there, but I continuously hear people, good people, say that this council doesn't care about the city. The only thing we care about is money because we keep approving these projects that are detrimental to our neighborhoods. And I have to tell you out there, we are not the ones that are imposing these ridiculous rules on you. They're coming from Sacramento and from groups like this from San Francisco that use the laws from Sacramento to force us to do something we don't want to do. I'm just disgusted with this. Absolutely. I'm disgusted with the way the project was proposed. They were given special concession as a whole block project when it is not. And anybody with any eyeballs knows we have a parking problem, and that's not being addressed either. So anyway, there you go.
Thank you. I'll have something to add to what you said when it's my turn, but I'm going to turn to Councilwoman Ayala.
Thank you, Mayor Miranda. Since I was talking before about parking lot, with the original study that we have from the spaces in the New Hall area, originally, we have here 132 spaces. For the expanded study area, it would be 205 spaces. Of course, since day one that this project was considered, I've been paying a lot of attention to the parking lot and the saying that potentially in the expanded study, there will be 205 spaces in the street. And the original project that this, they were recommending 145, and now with the addition, it's almost the same spaces that we're going to have in the street that this project is bringing is 189 versus 132 that we have now in the street. I think the city, we have been, of course, caring to your needs, and we have the pilot program with the shuttle. We have the potential parking structure in New Hall. That is going to happen. It's not going to happen tomorrow, but it's going to happen. And that's what I see with the spaces that we have, and in addition of that, we have the spaces for the New Hall, the community center, and the MetroLink station. So far, just by numbers, it makes sense to me, the parking right now with the future projects that also we are going to be having. Of course, all of us, we would like to have parking lot in front. I would love that. But I'm trying to be objective and also for our residents to be sure that they will have a space or a shuttle or an option for the future for the parking structure, where I will be more than happy that we move forward planning on that project for the city, for our future budget and our future projects, considering that if this project happens or any other, for economic development, also for having more businesses in the New Hall area, that we can have spaces for our residents and options to arrive there, like the shuttle. And that's for parking lot. I think, of course, this project has been changing and adding things, but regardless that what is happening with the project, the space, that now there's going to be more units, and I see there's going to be more parking space, there's going to be 54.80 more space, in total 189. I think here also what is making noise to me is rumors versus reality. And I would like to talk about that, especially with the developer, because even though in the last city council meeting, I was making questions about the clarity and transparency of this, if we are going to have this conversation, I think that's the noise that is happening around. So can I have, that would be maybe with the developer, asking you, because, of course, they were, the rumor about backdoor deal on this. And in order to make a decision, this needs to be a decision based in trust, too, not only in the units and the parking. So I was also talking with the city attorney in the last city council meeting here publicly. It's in video. Anybody can watch it. And we were talking, I was asking the question if we, the council members, when we talk with a developer or anybody in the community, is that called a negotiation, a proposal, or an idea? So can you just answer that one? Because we need to be very clear about transparency if we make any decision, regardless what it is, that is based on that.
So if council members or planning commissioners are meeting with developers outside of the public hearing context, and they're talking about what they'd like to see in a project, et cetera, whether you call that negotiation, or ideas, or proposals, one council member, one planning commissioner doesn't have the ability to bind the city to anything. So it's not until you go through the public hearing process that whatever those ideas, proposals, negotiations, whatever those things are, get brought to light and addressed and questions asked, and either they get included as part of the project or they don't.
Okay. Can we affirm nothing is official until we are here, like today, with the city council members that are eligible to vote in public?
Correct.
Yes or no?
Correct.
Okay. So whatever, anybody listens, it's behind, it's not official. It's official until you hear it, you see it, you make your opinion, right?
Correct.
Okay. That's number one. Number two, another rumor that was money-back door deal, did you pay anybody any money before this project? Because that's part of the rumor, that there's some money that was used or paid to anybody. Is that yes or no?
No. The answer is no.
Okay. So can we affirm here with the city attorney, city manager, mayor, city council member, and public, no money has been given?
Correct. No money has been given.
Okay. So that's not a rumor, it's more a reality.
What about money promised for an organization that somebody is on the board of?
We can talk about that. Like, for example, what money was brought here, it was because there was a structure that was on the table to tear it down or to move it. Was that the case? Yes or no? Okay. So what was your proposal? If it was moved, how much it would cost, and if it was, why it was the donation proposed? Because what was the expense of that option?
Yeah. The last meeting, it was discussed and deliberated, the amount of the impact fee, which was entirely discretionary, the council's decision to set the dollar amount to compensate the city, for lack of a better term, for the loss of the Masonic Lodge.
Okay. So you mentioned the city. So the money would be for the city?
The impact fee would go to the city, yes.
Would, as you said, would, because it was a proposal.
It would have gone to the city, correct.
Okay. And when you mean the city, since this was or is still, I mean, considered a historical building, that was going to be, now the question is for the city manager, that would go to what? If that would have, the proposal would have gone to a historical area, building?
Yes. The original proposal was to provide the money, with that sum of money, to be used for historical preservation, specifically would have been at Hart Park.
Okay. So it doesn't go to historical society, it goes for their function, for their finances? I just want to have it very clear, to me and to everybody.
The money, the money would be, the money, well, that portion of the project has already gotten approved by the council, so that is part of the original title of the project. So the money would come to the city, and the council would ultimately have the decision of allocating, appropriating that money to any future historical projects. So that would go through the budget process like any other city funding, but would be controlled by the vote of the council.
Okay. And in this case, is city council member McLean, Miranda, and I, who would make the vote for that?
No. It would be part of the budget process.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. But it would be here in the city, not one city council member appointing or doing that? Okay. So rumor, now we have the reality. Now, that, since that building, of course, is still on question, and at the last city council meeting, it was another proposal that then became a negotiation between, and a talk with the city council members that we were voting, and city council member Gibbs proposed to use $300,000 for future, for the parking structure. So that's where we are, right?
That's correct. The council modified the condition to $300,000 that would be used for future parking or the structure. to $300,000 that would be used for a future parking or the structure.
Okay, and that money was given already? Yes, no?
It's a condition of our demolition permit, which we intend to pull the next week or so. So it'll be paid when we pull the demolition permit.
Okay, so no, no money has been given? This is, we're still evaluating the project. Does anybody have any other question about rumor versus reality? I just want to have the base for trust before we voting, and that's it. Okay, any, any question from city council members? Yes, I'm done with that. I just want to...
Are you done?
Yes.
Okay, first my turn.
Thank you.
So first of all, if, if I was a little bit abrupt with council member Gibbs when he recused himself, I believe I have good reason to be abrupt. He's put this council in a position where it's either the three of us vote yes or if one of us even recuses themselves, the project fails. Think about that. Okay, so let's see. Mr. Gibbs, I hope you're listening. You're the head of the Republican Party locally here in Santa Clarita. Your job, your job is to know more about elections than the common citizen. Carl Goldman just said he's been here for 45 years, serving the community. And I agree, he's done a great job. He's a very smart man. He knows more about this community than probably almost anybody else. But yet he goes, one week after the session, here with his wife, who is stressing out because she's got to find a place to rent. But she goes, they go, they both go to a fundraiser for Jason Gibbs for Congress and they donate money to him. Now, I'm sorry, I got two of the brightest political minds in the world and they forced Jason to have to recuse himself. Why is that? Why is that? Okay? Why is it, Jason, Jason you, that you take a building that was assessed, I believe, at $1.9 million? And you're a smart man too, and a smart businessman too. But you're paying 2.4, 3, 4 million dollars for something that's assessed at 1.9? Why is that?
It's uniquely accretive to our project and that's the only reason why it's worth that to us and only us, because it adds units to the project. That's the only reason we can afford that dollar amount.
Okay, then why is it you couldn't afford $750,000 to give to the city for mitigate, mitigation?
It's one or the other, because that's...
Well, why did you choose that one instead of us?
We would have been happy to not do that. It was...
Why did you do it?
Because there was a lot of concern amongst the community about the fate of KHTS and some concern...
There's, there's, there's not a lot of concern about the fate of KHTS in the community. There's no proof of that whatsoever.
That's why we did it. So...
Okay, are you see, are you smelling what I'm smelling? Okay? One week after our wannabe congressman profiles in Latino Kurds, as I like to say, votes for the project, the Goldmans go and visit his fundraiser and give him at least $500, I don't know, is it 500? They can give him $3,300, I think it is. I don't know what the max is, but we can find out when, when the reporting comes in, but that'll be late. And it's rich because Carl came over here to this meeting not that long ago and accused us of not being transparent. And we've been nothing but transparent. And the Goldmans have been nothing but not transparent on this deal. Okay, so I like this project. I've said many times that I like this project. I think it's a good project. It's good for the city, good for the Old Town New Hall, good for the next project that's down the end. But I'm smelling something I don't like to smell. And I wish that you could make me feel better about this.
Okay, let me try. The KHTS building is in escrow. We've not purchased it yet. We've closed all three other lots. And the purchase is conditioned upon the approval for this project. That's before you, right now. And we evaluated the cost of all sorts of sound mediation, all sorts of other options, temporary relocation, all of it, to try to mitigate this problem. Because we're scared of starting a project and getting into a legal battle. It just doesn't, don't want to start a project that way. And it seems like, it seemed like there is a winning solution here for all parties. The community gets the units, the project gets bigger, all of the business owners in downtown New Hall, with the exception of Canyon Theater Hill.
Except the city. Except the city.
Except the city.
I want $750,000 for our city.
We have, I don't know, I don't know how to respond.
Are you giving 4, $2.4 million to, to the Goldmans and not giving the rest of our mitigation money to the city?
Mayor, can I just say one thing? I think at the last meeting, you told them to go make it right for KHTS.
That's true, but I don't think they would make it right at our expense. That's not making it right, that's making it wrong.
But I guess what I would add to that is, if we don't buy the building, we still have to spend that money to mitigate the sound. So it's not like, the, the choice is, is give the city $700,000 or buy the building, because we still have a sound issue if they're going to operate a radio station next door to a construction site. So that's...
You were here at our last meeting, or I think it was our last meeting, and you said, "We can't, we can't get the $750,000 to the city, we just can't."
That's right, because of the cost of the sound.
But you can get the 2.4 million for the Goldmans.
Because we don't have to mitigate the sound if we buy the building and incorporate it into the project. And we save that money and...
For a smart businessman, I think you got fleeced on this one.
I would like to pay less, absolutely, for the building. And I wish it had worked out that way. This was the best...
Maybe you should go back to them and ask them. Maybe you should close that deal, close it by not doing it.
It's contingent on this issue before you, so it depends on what happens tonight.
I'm not sure that we, we are the ones to tell someone that they're paying too much for something. That's up to him, you know? I, you know, me, I have, I have a problem with this project, but...
I have no problem with them being stupid. That's their business, okay? But I have a problem when they're being stupid with money that should come to the city.
Well, we should have talked about that at the last meeting.
Well, certainly, there are many parties that are affected. One is KHTS, because they were next door and they were, be affected by the noise or now they have the, for the...
But the noise has gone away.
Oh yeah, but my point is that I'm, I'm trying to have the vision of the, all the business owners also. There's a new business coming and I was feeling like it was difficult to approve one project by destroying another business, in this case, KHTS or the rafters. And I just see the goodwillness to make it work somehow. And I think the discussion, we can direct it in how we can balance, of course, if something good can happen in our community, how we can guide this or not to happen in our city. I think that, that should be, in terms of a business, I think they are like, if they're willing to donate, you decide who to donate. But in our case, I think we should be guiding if the project is good, is a good fit for the city or not. And that's the comment that I have.
I'll just say one more thing and I won't say anything else. I'm really concerned for the, the really small mom and pops who will be impacted with all of the construction and everything going on. And I think I asked last time if they were given any kind of mitigation for their businesses, and I think I was told no. And I'm also concerned that once this project is finished and we have brand new fancy commercial and certain businesses will come in that will be able to afford to pay their rent for there, but the mom and pops are going to suffer because they could be having the same and trying to make ends meet. And, and people are going to shop in the bright shiny new ones rather than in, in the smaller businesses. So that was my concern last time and I, I still have that concern.
Can I respond to that?
Yes, sure.
So, I mean, universally, we surveyed every business on the street and Ottena, the board voted unanimously to support the project. And the reason why is that there is not sufficient daytime traffic down there for the small mom and pops to make it. They desperately need the foot traffic. So with the exception of Canyon Theater Hill and maybe one or two others up and down that whole block, people want this project for that reason.
Well, as I also said, be careful what you ask for.
Okay, I just, I just want to add because, and it was brought up earlier in the meeting, that Patsy Ayala and, and I have been attacked rather viciously on social media, rather viciously, for a vote. One day I had X number of friends, the next day I had X number minus a bunch of people that blindly lead Denise. Okay, so I'm going to respond to that because it affects this project. Affects my vote on this project. For all that Mr. Goldman says about his wife being busy trying to find a place to rent, his wife's been busy pushing a lot of theories and anti-Bill Miranda stuff. That's, that's what she's been busy doing, in case nobody knows it. All right? I have nothing to hide. I have nothing anywhere to hide. I am an ethical person, I'm a spiritual person, and I have nothing to hide. I suspect, based on what I'm smelling, that maybe KHTS has some things to hide. Do you know the building you just bought? Was a historic building. Did you know that? Yeah, it was the New Hall, help me. New, New Hall Hardware. It was a historic building. Interesting how the Goldmans were able to buy a historic building. And you wonder why I'm smelling something I don't feel like I should be smelling. I'm going to go on because I've had some time to review some things. I wrote some notes that transpired several weeks ago and I would like to share some clarity with the public regarding some of the allegations that have been spread about wrongdoing about the approval we gave to the Hartwell project at our last meeting. Former Commissioner Light has been charging around town and in the local paper about all sorts of non-factual nonsense, claiming wrongdoing. "Oh my God, the council's corrupt." Wine, 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 okay? The fact is Denise Light not only voted for this project, but she voted for it twice, okay? If there was anything wrong with the project, any wrongdoing with the project, why would she vote for it twice? Okay? And she actually seconded the motion. Even after Ms. Light asked her question about the historic preservation mitigation fee to the city, Ms. Light voted for the project twice. So I'm not sure how Ms. Light goes from asking her questions about the project, knowing all the facts and voting in favor of it twice, to being a pretend whistleblower, like, "Oh my God, there's something wrong with the council." "Loreen cut a deal." She knows all the facts and yet she ignores that. And she rouses up all her people. And by the way, Ser Optimus is not supposed to be a political organization. But it's being used as a political organization. And I think they should fix that. I think the people who run Ser Optimus should fix that. It's okay to be supportive of your members. It's okay to do that. But in their bylaws, they're non-political. And what they're, what they've been doing is political. And they need to stop. When you take a moment to review the facts, they just don't add up in her favor. Okay, I will say something else, and this is personal. And she can take it personal, I don't care. Anything she says doesn't bother me. But I'm going to tell you, she ran for city council and she got beat by three members of this city council. She didn't just get beat, she got her ass kicked by three members of the city council. That's how popular Denise Light is, okay? And for her to be running for council after what she's done to Loreen, after what she did to Marsha McLean, calling her too old to run, talk about ageism, right? And she's running for city council by throwing grenades at the city council? Not so bright, Ms. Light. Sorry. Okay, so with that, I'm done talking. Everybody else is done talking, I assume?
I want to add, I want to thank the residents and the businesses that participated in this input, because every meeting is an opportunity to strengthen and for us to have your opinions and more open point of view for all the projects that we are reviewing. And today's project, with all the comments and facts that have been here, are ensuring that the residence and the business and the history is respected. That's all I have to say.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to...
A motion to go with, with the staff recommendation?
Second.
No?
Yeah, I move it.
Do I have a motion?
Okay, I, yes.
Do I have a second? I'll second.
And I have a question. I've been put in a position here, you know, where I apparently am the deciding person. What happens if my vote is not yes?
The resolution to approve the project requires three yes votes under the government code. If you do not cast a yes vote, then the project would not be approved.
If you do not cast a yes vote, then the project would not be approved. So at that point, the developer can decide to move forward with the project they already have approved, or they can decide to challenge that denial. They would have to do so in court. Additionally, HCD and the Attorney General could challenge that. Cal HGF, a little bit emboldened perhaps by a very recent win against the city of Beverly Hills, who denied a mixed-use project, and Cal HGF challenged that denial, and the court said that it was an HA project, you had to approve it. Cal HGF just won that challenge against Beverly Hills. So they might challenge this as well.
So there would be, I mean, there's no doubt, Cal HGF has already sent a letter to us stating that they will take legal action if, if we don't approve this project based on overbearing rules in Sacramento, which to me is disgusting. And it could cost our residents a lot of money trying to defend this, right?
Yes.
Okay. So I don't want to put our residents in a position for the city. I know, I know, I agree with you. I, I do...
Let me interrupt a second, please, Councilwoman. Is there a possibility to move this item to council meeting where we have at least four council members present? No?
No, that's, I, I asked, you know, for, for all of the ramifications of this. So if there were four of us, I would abstain again, because...
I have one thing that it goes, that we are talking. I think also delaying economic development in our area, it will be hurtful to our city. I heard many of the businesses from the Old Town New Hall Association that they are asking for help, they are asking how to get more clients, more flow, and I'm also listening to the business.
Well, okay, on that note, if, if, you know, Bill has a problem with KHTS and the deal, then, you know, there are a lot of, I got into trouble last time for saying this, somebody didn't like it and they were, you know, insulted. But there's a lot of investors who are members of OTNA who are supporting this project, which is fine, you know? There's no problem, there's no problem with investing in some, but anyway, so that's not really a good argument. But anyway, enough is enough. I know people out there in the audience are, some are going to be mad, some are not, I don't care, there's not much I can do, but it's my job to kind of protect the city, and even though I am giving up a principle of mine in principle, I feel like there's no choice here. So believe me, I hate to have this word come out of my mouth, but I feel like, like, under complete 100% protest, I will vote yes. And I don't like it.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I take the roll call, will you...
I couldn't do roll call yet, I have to do that again.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
The mayor's.
Okay, there's a second, okay.
I got it, yeah. No, you're right.
Mayor, before I do take the roll call, can I confirm that you have closed the public
Yes. Yes, the public hearing is closed.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Councilmember Ayala.
Aye.
Councilwoman McLean.
Call him next, please. Call Bill.
Mayor Miranda.
With great reservation, yes.
Councilwoman McLean.
Yeah, I can have it both ways. I have great reservations, but I don't want to hurt the city, so thank you very much for commenting.
Yeah, as I said again, under a lot of protest, I feel like I have to vote yes because the time to stop this nonsense was long ago when you vote for people in Sacramento. They're the ones that are causing this for us.
Also, I want to make another comment. With all the noise that has been having here, that's why we have three city council members, not five. So all this situation, it has been unfortunate, and now with the laws, I feel that we're forced to vote this way, to protect any, anything.
No, you're absolutely right. We're forced to do it. And the time to have stopped this was years ago when people have been voted into power in Sacramento.
Marsha, did you vote?
Yes. I voted yes under major protest.
Staff recommendation is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, the next item on the agenda, agenda item two. This is a time and place for the public hearing for the Masters University and Seminary Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, TEFRA hearing. The hearing is officially opened. We will receive comments, questions, and any oral protest from any interested person. When all comments have been received, the hearing will be closed. City Clerk reports, all notices required by... City Clerk.
All notices required by law have been provided.
Thank you.
Mayor, could we have...
It's getting to be a longest night.
Mayor? I'm sorry, could we have a couple of minutes, please?
A couple of...
Just a couple of minutes recess?
Oh, of course. Make it a five-minute break.
Okay, thank you.
We're gonna start, we're gonna start in two minutes. All right, we're gonna go, is Councilwoman West accusing herself again? Okay, never mind, she's accusing herself again.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
And, and just for the record, Councilwoman West will be recusing herself because of her property and its proximity to the Masters University.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, this time, this is a time and place for the public hearing for the Masters University and Seminary Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, TEFRA, hearing. The hearing is officially open, we will receive comments, questions, and any oral protests from any interested person. When all comments have been received, the hearing will be closed. City Clerk.
All notices required by law have been provided.
Thank you. City staff will now make a presentation, after which the public will have an opportunity to comment. With that, I would like to turn the time over to Assistant to the City Manager, Michael Villegas. Welcome, Michael.
Good evening, Mayor Miranda and members of the City Council, Michael Villegas, Assistant to the City Manager. The public hearing is being held at the request of the California Minnesota Finance Authority, also known as CMFA, on behalf of the borrower, the Masters University and Seminary, also known as TMU, to consider the adoption of a Tax Equity and Financial Responsibility Act, also known as TEFRA, resolution, approving the issuance of tax exempt bonds in an amount not to exceed sixty-five million dollars. The proceeds of the bonds will be used as follows: approximately twenty-one, twenty-one million to refinance costs associated with the purchase and improvements to numerous single-family residential properties previously acquired by TMU for temporary student housing; approximately seven-point-two million to refinance costs associated with the acquisition and improvements of an apartment complex located on Eighth Street; approximately ten million dollars to finance the acquisition and improvements of one or more apartment complexes with a one-half-mile radius of the Eighth Street, uh, complex, and approximately thirteen million dollars to finance or refinance various capital improvement projects on TMU's main campus. Additional bond proceeds will be used to pay certain costs associated with the bond issuance. I would like to note that the proposed action is a procedural matter required by the Internal Revenue Code, which states that prior to issuance, bonds are required to be approved by the elected body having jurisdiction in which a project is being financed by such bonds. It is also important to note, the approval and adoption of the resolution authorizing the issuance of the bonds will not require the city to be financially obligated, liable, or provide any financing for any of the aforementioned items. The city's credit, bond rating, and revenues are not at risk in any way by adopting this resolution. Approval of this, this resolution does not constitute approval or modification of any kind to the existing conditions of approval for the Masters University Master Plan, excuse me, the TMU Master Plan. All future projects funded by the bond issuance will be in conformance with the currently approved campus master plan and any amendment that, that may be approved by the City Council in the future. Finally, TMU has committed to not using any bond proceeds for the acquisition of any additional single-family residence within the Placerita Canyon community. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. City Clerk, any speakers? Thank you. Lots of speakers, okay. Sandra Catell, followed by Linda Townsley, Townsley, I'm sorry, and Tracy Brechner. Welcome, Sandra.
Thank you, welcome to all of you. I am a resident of Placerita Canyon. I've been a resident of this area for forty-six years. And when I moved out here, I was, I was floored by the small-town, close-knit feeling. I just loved it here. I live in Oak Orchard, in fact, on Oak Orchard Road, and I just love my community. Masters College is a Christian organization. I expect certain higher-level responsibility on their part. Several years ago, I was on the board, and I remember them coming to us and saying, "We want to remain a very small, intimate, local college, no more than eight-hundred students, including students coming onto campus." That was the first lie. Then we had an agreement with them when they wanted to put a giant cathedral on the corner of Quigley and Placeritos. And with the help of the City Council, we had an agreement with them that their cathedral was going to go up on the hill in the area that they owned, off of Duckweiler, and leave the community alone and not impose on them. Now we have them buying, they've bought over forty houses, maybe fifty, depending on who you talk to. By the way, because it's a religious organization, that's not taken out of our tax base. That's money that is costing us. It has changed the complexion of my community, which is a rural equestrian community. Now, I have listened to people in the city and on the council say things like, "Oh, well, we're gonna have a world-class university, another one here." Whoopie, this is great. I've heard people say things like, "Well, what are they gonna do with all that property if they don't get to put in their, their, all the things they wanna put in?" Well, first of all, that's not my problem. They shouldn't have bought it in the first place. I would suggest they put a park in there. We need a park in the community. They're really altruistic. What I'm saying is, this is not the same as supporting a bond of the, of Henry Mayo. It's very, very different. This is a private religious organization, and somewhere along the line, City Council, you gotta help the community out. When you have this giant college in the middle of a rural equestrian community, it changes the complexion of the community.
Thank you. Linda Townsley, followed by Tracy Brechner, followed by Teresa Todd.
I'm Linda Townsley, I'm a resident of Placerita Canyon, and I'm representing Placerita Canyon Property Owners Association this evening. We're in opposition of Agenda Item Number Two. The Placerita Canyon Property Owners Association respectfully submits the following concerns regarding tonight's public hearing for the Masters University, request to access favorable bond funds. Over the past several years, TMU and its related entities have aggressively purchased homes in Placerita Canyon, often overbidding, outbidding families seeking to make Canyon their permanent home and paying above asking price in all known cases. While the exact number of homes acquired is unknown, estimates suggest up to forty-five properties, representing approximately ten percent of Canyon homes, are now owned by TMU or its affiliates. Approving this bond issuance would effectively reward these unfair, unethical, and questionable acquisition practices. This summer, TMU's student housing properties appeared on Airbnb and Verbo. This practice is clearly inconsistent with TMU's stated educational mission. It is incomprehensible that the city could approve residential high occupancy permits for these properties while also allowing them to be operated as short-term profit-generating rentals. The item before, Council, is premature. Until TMU formally applies to amend its master plan, it is impossible to fully understand its intention for these properties. We urge the city to delay any bond approval until such an application is submitted and vetted. Approval of the bond issuance would further amplify TMU's already significant financial advantage over Canyon families. According to the Los Angeles County Tax Assessor's Office, properties owned by TMU for student and employee housing benefit from a nonprofit college waiver that dramatically reduces property tax liability through a church and welfare exemption. These exemptions remove the general tax levy of one percent and voted indebtedness for water, our community college, high school, and elementary districts, leaving only district assessments. In one example, the 2024 property tax bill for the home located at 21363 Placerita Canyon Road will be reduced from twenty-thousand-three-hundred-and-five dollars to nine-hundred dollars, representing a ninety-six percent discount. By contrast, families pay full property taxes.
Thank you. Tracy Brechner, followed by Teresa Todd, followed by Joe Morelli.
Good evening, Councilmembers and Mayor Miranda. I, I too am a resident of Placerita Canyon, and I've been a resident of Santa Clarita for thirty-eight years, and twenty-eight of those in Placerita Canyon. I'm just gonna repeat what Linda said, because it's just astounding that, in one example, on the 2024 property tax bill for the home located at 21363 Placerita Canyon, the revenue will be reduced from twenty-thousand-three-hundred-and-five dollars to nine-hundred, a ninety-six percent discount. And we're talking about, you know, forty-five homes that have been purchased in our area. By contrast, families pay full property taxes who reside in our area. While the city has previously approved bonds for College of the Canyons and Henry Mayo New Hall Hospital, those institutions are fundamentally different, as they are not religious organizations and are open to all residents. As a board member of the Placerita Canyon Property Owners Association, we've tried to have meaningful communication with the people at Masters College and with Grace Community Church. We believe this public hearing is scheduled solely because it's legally required, not because of any genuine effort to engage the public. There's been no meaning, meaningful communication between TMU, Grace Community Church Real Estate Group, or the PCPOA. Public records show the Real Estate Group is not the only applicant for TMU's Centennial Project, but owner of the Canyon residential properties through various LLCs. In March 2025, PCPOA reached out to Dr. Mark Zaccovich, Secretary for Grace Community Church Real Estate Corporation, to request a meeting to seek common ground and better, to better understand their project. On May ninth, 2025, Dr. Zaccovich declined directing all communication to James Bradley, who is the TMU's Director of Parent Relations. As residents, not parents, we find this approach dismissive and inappropriate. So in light of these concerns, PCPOA respectfully requests that the City Council refrain from approving this bond issuance until TMU's intentions for these properties are transparent and consistent with the community values and subject to public review. Thank you for your consideration.
Teresa Todd, followed by Joe Morelli, followed by Brian Walters.
Thank you, Teresa Todd, representing Placerita Canyon Property Owners Association. What we are doing is passing out the letter that was just recited to you, and all the issues that are outstanding at this point in time. The two previous speakers talked about the questionable real estate practices that have transpired, basically blocking out all other homeowners looking to purchase within the Canyon. And it seems that to approve this bond measure, or this bond now would reward them for those, those practices. The short-term rentals were a real problem, especially over Fourth of July, because, you know, we are fire-prone tinderbox canyon, and we had people coming in from all areas with fireworks, not having any idea of just how flammable California is, and particularly Placerita Canyon. So it does seem disingenuous, given the reduction in property tax, that they're able to make profits on these same properties that they're asking for the bond funds for. We do think it's premature, because we do not know yet what the amendments to the master plan will be. We've been told that they're not following through with the approved master plan from 2009. So we haven't seen exactly what that's going to be. And I guess what's most important to me, on a personal note, is the lack of genuine communication. And we reached out to, as Tracy mentioned, to Grace Community Church. We tried to reach out to Dr. MacArthur. He was very ill at the time, and so we went to the next in line, which was Dr. Mark Zaccovich. And our goal was to really see if there was common ground. Extend an olive branch, smoke a peace pipe, whatever you do, right? But to see where are the things that we can agree upon. And for two months, we really thought that that meeting was going to happen, and then we could move on from there. And it was very disrespectful, and not in the interest of the Canyon or the project, that we were turned down and declined. So we are still trying to meet with them, but we have been told not at that high of a level. So we understand that if you do not approve this tonight, Masters will go to the state. Let them do so, because there's too many unanswered questions here at the city level. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Morelli, followed by Brian Walters, followed by Wendy Kane.
Hello, Council. First off, Mayor, why are you not recusing yourself after having an opening speech on how MacArthur's legacy, you have books signed, you've actually been shown with pictures with the TMU hat on? Don't you think you should reclusive yourself from this vote? Oh, I guess not, but it doesn't matter as you slander, you know, constituents or Goldberg's because they wanna do something. But it's okay for them to get slandered from you, and you extort a business owner for seven-hundred-and-fifty K for the city. First off, TMU is literally a religious discrimination school. If you're not Christian, you cannot go there. You need to be Christian, you also have to have a letter proving that you're Christian in faith on that. So you cannot go to that school if you're not Christian. They are not Henry Mayo, they are not COC, they are not Cal Arts, okay? They don't go and say, "Oh, what religion are you? Oh, no, we can't take you. Oh, you're sick. Oh, hold on, what religion are you? No, we can't take you." That's what they do, okay? First off, they overpay for homes, whatever, property anybody can buy, they overpay. Now, they want the taxpayers, you guys, so you guys wanna go on record supporting a school that is actually discrimination on religion to people? And you want the people to pay for it? Really? I know you guys, oh, it doesn't hurt our triple-A financial rating, but you're getting thirteen K for it. Maybe is that thirteen K making up for the seven-hundred-and-fifty that you want from this developer? Oh, nothing to say? Really? Don't wanna reclusive yourself? No offense, Patsy, you're on that thing, same thing as well. So you wearing a hat, you're over here, wanna dedicate it, I understand the gentleman passed, but you wanna dedicate the end of this ceremony to him, and here you don't wanna reclusive yourself to this vote. You're gonna sit up there all high and mighty, higher learning, let's get some higher learning, but only if you're Christian, and you want the taxpayers to pick it up. So they default, no biggie, it's not on the city. No biggie, it doesn't hurt our triple-A rating, no biggie. They overpaid, now you want the taxpayers picking up for the, the money that they're doing. You guys are approving the RHOs on there, and what do they do? They turn around and put them on Airbnb. How is that not a conflict? So are you gonna do, are you So are you going to do, are you going to support them come December when their time comes up and they have to put in new application?
Brian Walters, followed by Wendy Kane.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Brian Walters. My wife and I moved to Placerita Canyon in 2020. We wanted a little more space to raise our three boys, then three boys, we're now up to four boys, and no, we're done, I'm never going to get that girl, I've given up on that dream. Placerita Canyon provided a unique and special place to raise our young family. Equestrian district, there are families with kids, an open space, and even a quaint religious university that our church was associated with. It seemed like, and it has been, a great fit for us. Unfortunately, since moving in, the field of neighborhood has been rapidly changing. House after house, TMU is buying up the homes and packing them with students. Now, I want to be clear, the students are great. They're very polite, I have nothing against the students. But the students are different, they're still changing, but they're not families. They don't have kids for my children to go out and play with. You can't really get to know them because as soon as you get to know their names, the next semester comes and they're gone and out the door. I don't expect them to take nearly as well care of their homes as homeowners do. They're noisier and they're up later, that's fine, but it's becoming more and more of them. And they also take up a lot more space, so they have 10 people, sometimes from 12, since I'm hearing, in houses. So you're having a lot more cars in driveways around the streets around us. This is an equestrian district, it's changing. I've heard many stories also of TMU making above-market offers on houses and promising they'd only pack it with faculty, family members, and then as soon as the house is sold, that they pack with students. Now, I kept refusing that, because I believe the hope and believe the best in others, especially about the religious universities, and I took us here saying, "Gotcha." Then my next-door neighbor was approached by Master University and told us that she was made a great offer, she wasn't even selling her house at the time, to be clear, so she took it. And she would promise, for led to believe it was stronger, that faculty would be in there, high-low faculty. A few weeks later, you know who moved in first? Airbnb tenants. A place my wife found, or someone on a county posted that was available on Airbnb. And throughout all of last summer, we've had just people cycling in and out, in and out, in and out. And now, summer started, school started, and we now have students in there. We have 10 boys, or at least like kind of 10 cars in the driveway next door for the weekend. And unfortunately, I just believe that TMU is lying to help acquire these homes, and they can say that these bonds won't be used to buy more homes, but I honestly don't believe them. And I think if they don't directly use it, it'll indirectly support and encourage this. My understanding also that TMU can outbid other families partially due to their tax status, and that seems really, really unfair, and is eroding a beautiful community, and I encourage you to vote no. Thank you for your time.
Wendy Kane.
Welcome. Thank you. I just want to say that I also am a Placerita Canyon resident, and to be transparent, my husband is an alumni of Masters College, which now is the university. And we have also had several children, as well as our son-in-law graduate from the Masters University. We live directly behind the Masters University. We've lived in Santa Clarita, married with our family for over 30 years, 20, well, I don't remember the name, but almost 25 years in the canyon. We have seen everything that everyone has mentioned, and these are our neighbors. I don't know all of them personally, but we do love living in the canyon. We are part of a community, though, that has always housed the college. It's been there for 98 years. It has had its transitions, and I understand that it has grown, but it has been there for a long time, and so when we all bought there, it was part of our community. I do know that there's been several changes to the master plan, as well as times that they've wanted to build a chapel in different locations, and also to build more dorms. And I know that that has been requested as they go back over the hill towards Stockweiler. And I realize that the landlocked opportunity for housing the students has led to this buildup of trying to figure out where they can house them. I don't know if it's the best option that they've purchased all of these homes to house the students, but since COVID and since the lockdown, and the students wanting to look for opportunities, there's been a huge interest in coming to the Masters University. And so I personally would encourage the city to consider the fact that there has been a lot of opposition to them building a dorm. And then also, I would like to note to the fact that I know that it is encroaching on the neighbors, but I personally haven't seen or heard anything that's been disrespectful. And I hope that this can be resolved and that the Masters University still has a good reputation in the end. Thank you.
Thank you. We have seven written comments, six oppose, one support. I'm now closing the public comment portion of this hearing. Are there any questions or any discussion by the members of the City Council?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Vegas, I had a, one question that was kind of brought up. In terms of how the money is used, obviously, it sounds like Masters has committed in this Tefra to not use it for purchasing single-family homes in the canyon. What's the city's monetary mechanisms for that? To ensure that it's not bond money or this Tefra money that is going to be used for that purchase? Do we have one?
I don't know if there's a mechanism for that. We work with CMFA on that, but there's no direct mechanism with the city to ensure that bond proceeds are used exactly for that. That is through CMFA, and that would be their responsibility.
So, Councilmember Gibbs, I'd only add that the specificity in the item is for, it's a tax exempt statute, so they have to provide reports, they are subject to what's in there. So the TMU would not be able to use the bond money to buy, to buy, the bond money will be used to refinance the existing homes. Now, the money that they give back is their money. So they are agreeing, as part of this agreement, to not buy additional homes, but we do not have a mechanism to first.
If the council were not to support it, what is their avenues for having a Tefra hearing?
They can go to the state.
And is the state required to hold that? City attorney?
So, so under the IRS code, this hearing, there's two required hearings, one by the issuer, which here is CMFA, the second is by the host. The host is a government jurisdiction within which the property is located. If it's located in both the city and the state, they can go to either the city or the state. So if they don't have success here at the city, then they can go through whatever process the state has for holding a Tefra hearing and see if they can get approval from the state.
In that instance, does the possibility exist that the state does not include the requirement that they've agreed to with us for not purchasing single-family homes with the bond financing?
I do not know whether at this point they could change the use of funds. I don't know how far they are in their process, but I can't answer that definitively that they would not be able to change it.
Okay. That's all for right now, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Has Masters University, who can answer this? Is there somebody from Masters University?
Yes, there is a representative from Masters.
Okay, yeah, my question is for Masters University, please. Good evening. Have you been in communication with the residents to talk about this bond and just to have the communication about what's going on since you're neighbors?
I unfortunately can't speak to any of the communication that has occurred or not occurred on that. I'm here primarily as a financial representative of the school. So if there's a feeling of a lack of communication, I would apologize for that, but I can't speak to it personally, and I wouldn't want to make claims on behalf of the school that I can't support.
Okay, so now, yeah, it is my understanding the same as Councilmember Jason gives, that you, with these bonds, wouldn't be allowed to buy houses, more houses, and you said for academic facilities and technology, state of the arts. I have an issue with communication, and it's unfortunate that you cannot answer that, because I've been knocking almost every door and talking with many residents, I've been also to the PCPOA, and the general feeling is the lack of communication, and that's, that's an issue that I really have, because at the end, you are sharing the canyon, and we need to have a balance there between residents and what is happening there. So I just want to have record that, on record that. Thank you.
Yes, my name is John Russell, I serve as the Director of Finance and Controller for the University.
You know, the old adage, ask forgiveness rather than permission? Well, that's kind of what we would be facilitating here when the college has gone out and purchased all of these homes, and now they're asking to help, the city would be facilitating through this, their ability to go back and refinance the debt. So I have a problem with that. I have a problem with the perception that we would be saying, oh, it's okay to go ahead and do that, when they don't, that's okay, you don't, you don't need to stand up there, when they don't seem to stick to what they have promised the residents. The other thing is, is I noticed in here that the money would be used to, for the college to go out into the community to purchase apartment buildings, so, on 8th Street. So that is not on the college campus, and I'm, I'm concerned about that language. I'm also concerned about 13 million to finance or refinance the acquisition, to finance or refinance the acquisition, construction, improvement, renovation, and equipping of certain educational facilities and amenities, including capital improvements and expenditures to academic student support and related facilities. So this language is wide open as to what they can do with this money. And I, for one, if they're able to go to the state, I for one say go ahead and do that. I don't think, I think this city owes a certain allegiance to the residents who've come here, who are concerned, who have been impacted, that's okay, who have been impacted by what the college has already done. Also, I'm concerned that we have no idea of what the new master plan is going to be. They don't seem to be willing to share that with, with anybody. And at the very least, I would say table this until they come forth with a master plan as to what they plan to do. I just have a problem with this, and I, and I don't condone what they've, the practices of the college, and I just don't think we should be facilitating this bond.
Do I have a motion?
Mayor, can I ask one more follow-up question? First, please. Same answer to Councilwoman McLean's question, she asked about the using 13 million dollars for improvements, student support expenditures on the campus. I assume, at least the way this is written and how the specific plan is written now, they are only required, they are only allowed to do improvements that are currently approved under the current specific plan. If they were to get their bond financing and want to do something tomorrow, they couldn't go outside of the current specific plan unless they present something new and the council approves it. Is that correct?
Councilmember Gibbs, you referenced a certain amount of money, so there's different buckets of money in there. Some of those buckets of money go toward improvements that are within the master plan boundary. Some of those buckets of money extend beyond the master plan.
Understood.
So the apartment complexes that are referenced are obviously outside of the canyon. So those are, there are no restrictions that would preclude them from going and spending money outside of that. I'll defer to Michael, I think the 13, he has more details on the 13.
Thank you. Correct. As Ken was saying, so anything outside of the PCPOA area would not be included within the master plan, or they would be held to those requirements. The 13 million is specific to the TMU main campus, therefore they would be subject to the currently approved master plan, and they have to be in conformance with that.
Well, what about the language in here that says they, they wish to acquire apartment buildings on 8th Street?
It's outside the master plan. They would be able to, but it's outside the master plan.
Right, exactly. So now, they're, they're buying up these properties and impacting neighborhoods, neighbors in Placerita Canyon. Now, we're going to be facilitating, allowing them to go out into the community and do the same thing for apartment complexes in neighborhoods where residents will be impacted. Now, I love the master students, I truly do, but they're young people, and young people like to have their friends over and, and have a good time. I do not want to subject any more apartments or residences to that type of behavior. And are they going to be then renting them out as B&Bs? Come on, guys, I don't see how we can facilitate this at all.
Do I have a motion?
All of the recommended action with, just one additional comment, Mayor, if I may.
Of course.
As I understand it, the, one of the hallmarks of the master plan was, it was something that both Masters, sorry, Masters, the city, and PCPOA agreed upon, or felt that, came to a consensus on what they thought would be good for the canyon, what Masters wanted. So my comment is, I don't, I don't have a problem facilitating this master, but I absolutely share the concerns we have seen with what they have been doing with purchasing single-family homes. I feel we have a buffer here, but I would just like it pointed out there that as they go forward with their plan, I would expect them to be able to continue to work with PCPOA to find an agreement. If they don't, if, if they, if they don't, it will be difficult for me to be supportive of another specific plan. But I am okay supporting the motion for the Tefra hearing.
But you're allowing them to go out into neighborhoods and purchase apartment buildings, which are going to impact residential neighborhoods. And you're giving them a free rein.
Please, please, let's keep, let's keep those comments.
And you're, and you're giving them free rein to go back and refinance their debt and use other monies then to continue to purchase homes within the canyon. This is very, very broad, at the very least. Let's send it back and get some tightening of the language.
Well, I don't mean, just to clarify, Councilmember McLean, they already own one. So one money is to refinance the acquisition of one that they currently own on 8th Street. The second pot of money is to purchase another one. So, and then I just want to be clear with the council, because there's, there really is no mechanism for us as the city agency. The language in there, we asked for, as we negotiated this, for the last couple of months, trying to get to a comfort level of the money being consistent with the master plan. The language is there for us, but once again, there is no enforcement mechanism or awareness of us of how they spend the money they give back and whether they continue to purchase properties. They're saying they're not going to, but I just, I don't want to create an expectation that we have any mechanism to go back and enforce that, because we don't.
Well, they haven't proven to keep their word before, so that's my concern.
Do I have a second? I'll second.
Councilwoman McLean?
No.
Councilmember Ayala?
No.
Councilmember Gibbs?
Yes.
Mayor Miranda?
Yes. The motion's not carried. Am I correct?
The motion fails. Motion fails.
Unfinished business is item number three. We'll now proceed to unfinished business on scheduled vacancy on the planning commission. With that, I would like to turn the time over to Mayor Protem West when she gets here. Here she is. Welcome back. To Mayor Protem West to proceed with her nomination.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the distinct pleasure to interview with all the applicants, which there were many, many talented people, and I had the pleasure to enjoy some of them having very interesting comments about our community, which was kind of fun, actually. And I have selected Mr. Daniel Faina. He is highly qualified to finish up his term as planning commission. He is up to speed on a great deal of the planning process and the ever-changing complexities of the state of California putting on the cities, which is important. And he has worked with, on the Henry Mail Foundation as well as the EDC. He has strong family, church, and community ties, and therefore I would like to move Daniel Faina as my nominee for planning commission.
Thank you. Councilmember comments?
No. I'll second her motion.
We have one speaker. Glenn, are you still here? Glenn, going once.
Glenn is priceless. He's priceless.
You have three minutes.
Can't believe I said that. I'm talking for Tony Maldonado. You know, I never say this. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Santa Clarita deserves a planning commission that focuses on city's future, not distractions. Recently, the committee was disrupted by actions that spread misinformation and eroded public trust. These efforts diverted attention from the community needs. Some of this misinformation continues outside the commission, but the council's decisive action in June made it clear. Accountability matters and public service was always to be put first in the city. Tonight, we have a chance for a fresh start. This vacancy is an opportunity to bring in a commissioner with vision, integrity, and commitment to Santa Clarita. Someone who sees planning as a tool to shape thriving neighborhoods and vibrant business districts. Not a political stepping stone, someone who values transparency, collaboration, and honest engagement over disruption and manipulation. This appointment matter, this appointment matters because planning shapes the community well we all live in. Every decision affects homes, business streets, public spaces. The right commissioner can foster innovation while protecting what may sound to Clarita unique. The wrong choice risks delay, division, and lost trust. Most importantly, Santa Clarita deserves leadership that builds confidence, not fear. A commissioner who listens to resident, respects, respects facts, and engages with honesty can help repair trust and strengthen the relationship between the community and its government. Residents deserve a commissioner who will contribute solutions instead of conflict, who will guide development with foresight, and who will restore trust rather than erode it. This is more than filling a seat, filling the seat. It is a statement. The city will move forward with leadership that embodies vision, accountability, and the public good. Let's choose a commissioner who will help Santa Clarita thrive today and for generations to come. Thank you. That last part was not me, it's Tony. But thank you anyways.
We have a nomination.
Motion.
A motion, I'm sorry. And we have a second city clerk.
I apologize. I didn't get the second. And then I'm sorry. The motion was?
Mayor Protem.
All right. Thank you.
Councilwoman McLean?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibbs?
Aye.
Councilmember Ayala?
Aye.
Mayor Protem West?
Aye.
Mayor Miranda?
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Daniel.
Faina.
Faina.
Faina. No.
Okay, now we're moving on to the consent calendar. We have item 11, I believe it was.
We did have a speaker card for item eight, but the speaker card was pulled. So I do only have speaker cards for item 11, which was pulled for a separate vote.
Okay.
Would you like this now?
Yes. Thank you. Lynn Plambeck, followed by Linda Townsley, followed by Teresa Todd.
Hi, Lynn Plambeck, Santa Clarita Organization for Planning and the Environment. And you know, we've been working on wildlife corridors in the city for a long time, trying to make sure there's connectivity. And of course, I don't know if you saw on social media that poor bear trying to cross the Highway 14, went along the freeway because he didn't go under Placerita Canyon. So we're really concerned about giving up your easements here because it will really impact the ability to have the wildlife corridor under the freeway. And it's very unclear whether you're giving it up because they intend to build that property, do something with that property, whether this is for a specific homeowner, how much money you're going to get for it. And it seems like if you're going to just be giving it away, that's a gift of public funds. You shouldn't do that. So came to ask you, please be more transparent. Don't put it all over on the city manager where nobody can see it anymore. And, you know, come back with an offer of, of a purchase price for it so that the city's getting some money for it. But we personally oppose you selling that easement because it's going to impact the wildlife corridor. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Townsley. Followed by Teresa Todd.
I'm Linda Townsley, and I'm speaking tonight as a PCPOA board member and longtime Placerita Canyon resident. At this time, the PCPOA board does not support this item. The anonymous applicant has not been transparent with the community, and we do not have sufficient information to take an informed positive position. We request that this item be postponed and brought back at a later date, once the full scope of the proposed project has been made available and thoroughly discussed with the community. Any consideration for vacating the easements should occur only after that process has taken place. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Todd.
Hello again, Teresa Todd, President, Placerita Canyon Property Owners Association. We have not had time to take a look at what this project is. We are just finding out about it. It is part of the Placerita Canyon Special Standards District. It does reside within those boundaries. So of course, we have a vested interest. We have not really gathered to discuss it at a board meeting, to have it on our agenda. It will be on September 4th. So there is, there are so many questions that it does seem to be ambivalent as to why they would want these easements and wants, if the city does vacate the easements, what could be the future development there? We are asking that you just postpone to give both yourselves and our organization time to fully understand. And when and if a sale goes through and a future project comes forward, we'll take a look at it. We are not being, to bring us back to the beginning of the meeting, we are not being disagreeable. We are just trying to, to be respectful for our position and our residents. There's a lot of things happening in the canyon, as you can tell, and we haven't even talked today about the aggregate place that, that is trying to, to operate in that same general area and has a very definite way of impacting the canyon, much as CEMEX that the city has for decades fought against. We're looking at that now in our own backyard and hoping to be able to work with the city to follow the rules, what rules are established in that regard. But there's so much happening within the canyon, both within and now on the boundaries and that whole, you know, southern, eastern side. We just ask you, please, to pause, take a breath, get more information, and let us all work to come up with things that, that we can all live with, that stay with, within our special standards without going outside of those boundaries, really. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more speaker, Anthony Mathis. Welcome.
Anthony Mathis, I'm a resident of Placerita Canyon, but I'm representing the owners of the property, who've owned the property for 20 some odd years. They are, there is no project planned for this property. So there is nothing to bring forth to the city or the Placerita Property Owners Association. The owners want to remove the street or vacate the street segments. There's, there's a few Sally Road and the old Placerita Canyon alignment that went through this property when the county had it 30, 40 years ago. And they're just asking to have those removed and so that the property can be clear of these roads so that they can sell the property to anyone who wants to use it in, use it in the future times. So there's nothing that we can bring to the city because they don't plan on anything. This was, when, when we brought this before the city to have the city approve of vacating these strips, they, they said, well, one of the members wanted to have an easement for, to preserve the right of way of a future path. So the city came to us and we had our engineers go back to the drafting board and, and created a, a, a path for animals, for people to walk or bike or whatever they're going to do. It cost us a lot of money to have this redone. So we did that because the, the planning commission or the city staff said this is what we would like. So we did that for them and presented that to them. And it's, it's ready to be recorded, to give this to the city. So I just don't understand why a property owner is just asking for these street segments to be removed and there is no plan for development. It, when, I assume, when a, when a owner, when a buyer comes in and wants to do something with the project, they're going to come before you and say, this is what we want. And at that time, the city will have an opportunity, staff will have an opportunity to build, to plan a development or, or a building per the city's requirements and involve the PCOPA in that discussion. But that's way in the future. They're, the owners are just requesting that we preserve, to remove the street segments that were made years and years ago, that don't have any purpose today, can't be used for public right of way. Thank you.
Thank you. Did we have council comments for item 11?
Marsha and I, okay. I agree that easements have no public purpose. They were, it's ridiculous, a flood zone. And we did get a letter from the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy I read a while ago. The water that comes through here starts in the San Gabriel Mountains. It comes down through Placerita Nature Center. It dumps into an area that goes through Disney Ranch. It goes under the 14 freeway in a 12-foot tunnel. It is part of the original and still active trail system. And then it goes under Sierra Highway, same thing. Goes into Placerita Creek. Placerita Creek runs all through Placerita Canyon, runs into the South Fork, runs into the Santa Clara River, moves on to the ocean. It is a huge conduit from the mountains all the way to the ocean. It is the wildlife corridor through that area. You're getting deer, bobcat, bear, mountain lion, and every other such critter. And you will see herds of deer that come through there and they go up over the hill into our open space in Quigley Canyon. And I, I, I think my biggest concern here is that you have street easements that are literally of no purpose and they never would have been. You're not going to drive around streets in the middle of a flood zone. But when the water comes through there, it is fast and rapid and hard. And you need probably 100-foot wide floodway through there. And it would be important to acknowledge that right now because if somebody's going to do a project, you want to be able to get that. You do not want to start anything that would start concreting in the creek. It's been natural all the way through. It is, at one point in time, the LA County Flood Control District wanted to concrete in the entire Placerita Creek. I didn't think that was appropriate, and I said so. It's a long time ago. But that canyon is able to accommodate water because it is left pretty natural at the bottom where the creek flows through. So I think it's important to look at this and say, okay, how do we accommodate nature, water recharge, the wildlife corridor? You don't want anything to impede that. And I don't think you should lose your ability to, to get a hold of the appropriate width and buffer. And I had a minute, a very small conversation with Ken, who understands, I think, what we're talking about. And I think planning staff does too. But this is really kind of a critical spot. We only have a few opportunities to get under the freeways and the roads. So I don't want to do anything that impairs that. And I don't, I know there's no project here, and I get that. And I understand that it's useless having street easements that are called XYZ Road when you can't use it. But I just want us to have the corridor that protects the creek through there and protects the wildlife because it's very active and you shouldn't do anything to impede it. So I don't know where to go from there. Maybe we can have some dialogue back and forth.
Yeah, I had made some notes before the meeting and I have down here, well, what is planned. And we want to be careful that we don't facilitate something that could be a problem in the future. And we already are losing any control over any development. And it concerns me that I think this is premature to ask for these easements at this time. We shouldn't be giving up anything until we know the future plans for this property. So I would suggest that we just postpone this until we do know some future plans because by clearing and giving this, this vacation right now, we're just, once again, giving carte blanche to something that could very well be a problem in the future. So I'm just going to go ahead and make a motion that we postpone this until we know better what's planned for that piece of property and how we can and how we can help protect it.
I have one more question, Mayor. City manager, is it possible if you were to go back to the property owner and talk about merging easements into an actual corridor that comes through there that would protect the creek, that would be appropriate and useful for future planning purposes, the right amount of width, and come back to us?
We can do whatever's at the council's pleasure. I will say that, just for additional information, the map that we've included, it may be a little misleading. I think as you look at the road, the right ways, these easements were granted like back in 1940. So they were used specifically for road purposes. So the Streets and Highway Code does provide a mechanism that a public agency does not have a specific use for a public road, that the property owner can come back and say, you're not using it for that purpose. I need it back. And that is why we're here today. That's what the request is. I can, I'll defer to the city attorney as to whether or not that's a requirement or simply a request. But I will say that I had engineering staff go back because the red line, the 12 feet, does look like it's a little small compared to where the creek is and so on. So in looking at that, we believe that the actual buffer, that if there were a project to come through, we would look at, and CDF or Fish, excuse me, California Department of Fish and Wildlife would require, would be in excess of somewhere between 100 to 120-foot buffer. So it wouldn't be the 12-foot that you're seeing in the easement. Any development proposal would look at that, and the requirement would be much greater, probably, like I said, up to about 120 square, 120 feet. And that would come back to the council and any impacts that are not dealt with or you felt needed to be greater, studied greater, that would be at the discretion of the council as part of any future development project as well. So I think we brought it forward because the amount of the buffer is more than just a 12-foot easement. But 120 is about what we believe Fish and Wildlife would probably require.
Well, it says here the location of the easement will be adjusted based on future development site plans. Does that not leave it open to whatever the developer would want?
I'll defer, I'll look at the engineer, but I think the easement, we would move it out of the middle of the creek if it's for a trail, to put it where the trail would need to go. So it would not move it out of the creek, if that's your question.
Well, it just says the location is going to be adjusted based on future development.
That would be, as part of the development process with the council.
Is that where you're going to get the 100, 120-foot width?
Correct.
How can we be secure with that? Is there something you can write in to do that?
Let me have Shannon come up and see.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Shannon Pickett. I'm the Assistant City Engineer in the Capital Improvements Division. One thing that we could do that's been suggested is protect the area in the future. Could be through a restricted use area and get the width that you want now.
Is that part of this or a separate item?
It would be a separate document that gets recorded. A restricted use area could be for flood purposes or geotechnical purposes. And it could protect the area that, 120 feet.
And what possible future development could go there? Commercial, industrial, something that would not really be compatible with a wildlife corridor?
If the owner grants a restricted use area, that would restrict any future development within that strip.
But in terms of the land use, let me have Jason come up and address the land use, what it's zoned for.
Hi, Jason Crawford, Director of Community Development for the City of Santa Clarita. The property has a commercial zoning on it. It is, it allows for commercial uses.
Right.
Business uses. But any project would have to come back to the city council. And it was mentioned, or would have to come back to the city through a review process. And as was mentioned, it is part of the Placerita Canyon Special Standards District. And so it does have, it does have to comply with the special standards district.
I have a question too regarding requirements. For any future potential project, will it be required to communicate also with the residents?
The city encourages notification and communication with residents on all projects. And there are specific requirements for notification on projects as well.
Thank you.
I think that Shannon's idea about getting that document language now would give everybody comfort. You can't predict if there'll ever be anything there or what development will go there. It is commercial. But protecting the wildlife corridor with language right now would probably be a good idea since it's in front of us. And that's what you ultimately are going to do anyway. So it would just give everybody a comfort zone to know the creek's protected.
Well, then, does it need to come back to us with that language?
Well, the restricted use area covenant, if you just make that a condition of the vacation, then you adopt your resolution. And the resolution and the restricted use would be recorded in sequence so that one replaces the other. If that's your direction and you don't want to see it again, then staff can implement that. If you feel that you have to see it, like on a page, then that would be something that would direct staff.
In my opinion, I think it would be a really good idea to see it on the page before we vote.
Do you want to adjust your motion?
Well, my motion is to postpone it.
And that's my question.
I'll still keep that motion to postpone it until we see the language that we're talking about. Or to have it come back, whatever you need to do that.
Is there a second?
Let me, let me ask Councilwoman McLean a question. If we agreed to do that, which it sounds like we're all pretty close to that, couldn't we just go ahead and move it, save the time, and have staff bring back the page once it's signed?
I'd like to see it before it's signed. I mean, is it a big deal to bring it back to us at the next meeting with that language and then I can be happy? It's not a big deal, or it is a big deal.
It is not a big deal.
Okay, well, then I would ask for that.
Mayor, if you're going to have him speak, he needs to come to the mic because otherwise the, we can't pick it up by the recording.
Okay, come to the mic. Thank you. Identify yourself again, please.
Yeah, Anthony Mathis. I'm representing the owners of the property. The last time we were here, the council, the staff recommended or asked for an easement so that there would be a trail easement across this property, which actually goes to nowhere. There's nowhere for a trail to come in there. All the property surrounding it's owned by an oil company. And so there actually is no access to the property. And the only, and it doesn't go anywhere. You'd have to go under the, use the tunnel to get out, which gets into Disney. The owners are fine with any animals coming across the property, and that's never been an issue. But now you're taking away the owner's rights to develop the property by asking them to put a 120-foot floodway barrier. And now the property's undevelopable. Well, it just is, you're changing the use of the property. It's commercial, it should be commercial. If the owners or whoever comes through you and says, we would like to develop, we'd like to put a building here, well, you have, at all that time, you have the right to say you can and you can put it here, you have to build the creek, whatever it is, you have the right and you have the authority to make the development the way the city would want it. But you're asking now to convert this property into a wildlife corridor. And that just is, you're taking away the rights. The easements or the road segments were for the purpose of roads. And that's all that the owner's asking. Fine, if you're not going to use the roads, then don't use the roads. Give us the property back. That's all that you really have the right to do. You don't have the right to change the property. But if you're not going to use the roads, don't use the roads. And that's really all we're asking you to do is don't use the roads. Give us the roads back. And when a development comes to you, then you can oversee what the development should be, just like you do with every other development. But as city manager said, we have the right to ask for the property back if you're not going to use it as a road. But don't ask us for other things that you want in place of those roads. That should not be the law, which it isn't. So please let the owners rule on, if there's a future development, rule on at that time. The owners don't have any idea what they want to do. And so you're saying something that may happen three, four, five, six years down the road, you're going to stop the owner from doing anything because now you've changed the value of that property? You've changed the ability to do anything with that property? You should, in my opinion, we asked for the roads back because you're not going to be using the roads.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
A fair thing.
You can have a seat now, please. Thank you.
I think the main issue is that this is commercial. But of course, we have this part that is used, of course, for animals and it's natural. So it's on our, it will be our decision how can this be the best outcome for the location, for natural life. But at the same time, I understand the owner of the property, when they bought it, it was a commercial. But how do we save also our wildlife corridor? How can we balance that?
That is entire flood area through there. The water coming out of there, sometimes that 12-foot tunnel is completely full. And it moves 40 miles an hour. It's fast, it's hard, and it is a wildlife corridor. And you can go track it if you want. And I think Joe could probably help with what to do here. But you can't take away the right of a property owner by saying, you know, this area isn't going to be built in because it's flood hazard and it is definitely a corridor. And I'd hate to see anything that would harm that. It has always been like it is. And if you bought that land, you can certainly see it. You can't be confused about it. But I'd like to know how we can get to where we're protecting that wildlife corridor and the waterway. There's, they say the most important thing on the planet today is water. And you have to be really careful what you do that impacts water.
So Mayor, excuse me, Mayor and councilmembers, so I guess to answer your question, you can do what you guys just discussed. I understand the property, the representative, what he's saying. It doesn't preclude development on the property because it would be precluded anyway. So if the council wishes, that's your desire is to put the restricted use covenant on there, we can put that in an agenda item and bring it back and have the council review that and consider that for approval. You know, as Joe and I were talking, the law does say the council may vacate it. It doesn't say it's required. So I think that you have discretion to get what you want. And I think as you look at the easements, many of those easements don't fall into what you guys are talking about.
No.
So two-thirds of the easements fall outside of the buffer and the corridor. So those, as we come back, would be easements that we would recommend vacating. And then just vacating with a restricted use covenant on the other portion of it.
Sounds like we can do what we need to do, so just.
We'll go back to the motion. Could you restate it, please?
Well, I just would make a motion that we bring it back with what can be done on the property. Do we have to have a motion or can we just have a consensus on that?
Well, at this point, I mean, this isn't a public hearing. It's a consent item. So if you take no action, nothing happens. If you're giving staff direction to come back with it, exploring what restrictions could be put in place to address the concerns that have been raised, staff can work on that.
Well, that's what I'd like to do is to give staff direction and bring it back.
Are you clear, staff? You understand what councilwoman's saying?
Yes, I do. Is that, I just want to, that's concurred,